Hey, Council President, Council Members and Participants. We are now...
Thank you. Good morning. I'm gonna get started. And I would like to welcome everyone to the public hearing and public meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole. State law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote public hearing as follows. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council Committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions on how the public may view and offer public testimony at public hearings of Council Committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News Inquirer and Legal Intelligence prior to the hearing and can also be found on P H L Council dot com. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the role to take attendance? And members that are present, please indicate by saying "present" or "I" or whatever it is you will choose. Mr. Christmas, call the role.
Yes, sir. Council Lady Bass.
Good morning, I am present. Thank you very much.
Council Lady Brooks, please.
Good morning, I am present.
Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President and colleagues.
Council Lady Gerges.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Present.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'm here.
Council President.
Morning, Council President. Morning, Councilman. I'm present.
Councilman.
Um, good morning, I'm present.
Councilman.
Go ahead and say something with your mic.
Councilman Johnson. Are you coming?
Oh, I'm present. I'm fully masked. I'm around my staff. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, Councilman Jones, you have you. Councilman Johnson, please. Councilman O'Neill, please. Councilman O.
Present, good morning.
Council Lady Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in Philadelphia.
Council Lady Camille Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues.
Councilman.
I think that we may be having a hard time hearing, but good morning, Council President and colleagues.
Councilman Thomas. Council President Clark.
I am here. And let's get started.
Excuse me, Council President, this is Councilman Bobby Heenan. Good morning, colleagues. I apologize. I am present.
Good morning, Councilman. Okay, this is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding Resolutions Number 200715, 200716, 210031, 210032, and 210033. Mr. Christmas, can you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Appointing James Arrows Jr. to the Position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment. That's Resolution 200715. Resolution 200716 Confirming the Appointment of Diana Cortez as the City Solicitor. Resolution 210031 Confirming the Appointment of Cecilia Thompson to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Resolution 210032 Confirming the Appointment of Lisa Sally to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. And Resolution 210033 Confirming the Appointment of Reginald L Streeter Esquire to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Before we begin to hear testimony from the witnesses today, everyone who has been invited to testify should be aware that this public hearing is being recorded. Because the hearing is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. By continuing to be in the hearing, you are considered to be being recorded. Additionally, prior to recognizing members for questions or comments they have for witnesses, I will note for the record that we will use the chat feature available in the Microsoft Team to allow members to indicate they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the first witness who had to testify this morning on Resolutions Number 200715, 200716, 210031, 210032, and 210033?
Our first witnesses, Council President, are James Arrows Jr., nominee for Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment, and Rob Dubow, City Finance Director.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just please state your name for the record. And you can proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is James Arrows Jr. I am the interim Chief Assessment Officer at the Office of Property Assessment. I thank you for the opportunity to testify on Resolution 200715, which would appoint me to the Chief Assessment Officer position permanently to complete the term ending June 30th, 2022. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Philadelphia and have been working for the city in the property assessment field for the past 17 years. This has given me the opportunity to learn about the value and duty of the department at every level over the course of nearly two decades. I have served in my current role as the interim Chief Assessment Officer since January 2020. I believe in the importance of fair, equitable, ongoing reassessments that the OPA strives to provide, as well as its commitment to continuously improve the assessment process. The OPA has recently implemented a number of key process and procedure changes that were suggested by industry expert Robert Gladymans, as well as recommendations made by an external audit commissioned by City Council. These changes include creating a dedicated market data team, hiring additional data modelers, making valuation and assessment reports available on OPA's website, and documenting and explaining the assessment and valuation process to the public. The OPA is also in the process of reviewing and implementing several additional recommendations, including a review of all classifications and condition codes for residential and non-residential properties. Taken together, these improvements will help ensure the sustained success of the department and will assist the OPA in achieving the long-term goal of receiving the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment and Administration from the International Association of Assessing Officers. It has been a privilege to serve the citizens of Philadelphia, and I am honored to be nominated to continue to serve in this capacity on a permanent basis. This concludes my testimony, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dubow, are you just here to provide support, or did you have any testimony?
Just here for support.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and good morning. Mr. Arrows, I have one question that I know that's usually on everybody's mind. Camera system. Is it ready and is it functional? And can we count on it to give us accurate assessments and all the other good things that was promised over the many, many years that we've been hearing this year after year in the testimony?
Sure. So we went live with our camera system about a year ago. And Phase One of the functionality is a rollout of all of our previous processes for our day-to-day business operations here. And that started a year ago and has been ongoing, the rollout since then. And we are preparing to start the second and third phases of the camera implementation, which is new functionality and technology to assist us with data collection in the field and a new customer service interface for citizens to interact with us on our website and some other new functionality that we currently don't have. And we will be using that system for the next reassessment that we do, and we anticipate no issues with that, and we'll be using that fully as we complete the next round of assessments.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, because we've been talking about it for a long, long time. One other question. In earlier years, before the pandemic hit, it was suggested that we would experience natural growth in values. I think we estimated around 3%. Is that on the... Is that... Are we still there? Or has it been a dramatic change in terms of what we project as it relates to the natural growth assessment?
So in the last year alone, so if we look at calendar year 2020, the growth in market... The growth in the value of sales of properties throughout the city was much higher than that. I've seen estimates for residential property in excess of 10% just for 2020 sales in and of themselves. So I would say that any predictions that we may have had or may have been estimated year-over-year previously may not have been exceeded... Well, I certainly have been exceeded in the last year, and then we'll see if that continues to happen before the next round of assessments.
All right. My last question, before I pass it over to my colleagues. Can you tell me what's going on with that significantly increased level of market value and sales? And I think some people thought that somehow it would be negatively impacted by the pandemic, but when you look at our budget projection, that's the one category that's actually increased or kept pace at a minimum and probably exceeded what we did last year. Can you give me a sense of what's going on and why the values are driving up?
So at a very high level, there are... There were fewer transactions that took place in 2020 compared to previous years, although it was a single-digit decrease, so it wasn't a tremendously large number. I think the historically low interest rates are certainly a driver for folks to try and get in and purchase a property at lower rates. And we've seen demand for properties really go through the roof and bidding wars for certain properties take off at the moment a property hits the market. Record... Record number of days on the market in terms of actually being shorter than normal, and the supply for the last year or so has not met the demand that is out there in the market. So those are really the... Some of the main factors as to why there's been such a growth over the last year.
Okay. I know I said that was my last question, but this is my last question. Do... I know that there was also some concerns raised about people leaving the city of Philadelphia because of the pandemic, the density issue, and everybody had projected everybody was going to move to the suburbs where the COVID numbers were much lower. Have we... And I don't know if you can determine that. I know you can look at sales and our transfer taxes, by the way, also. Can you have a perspective on that? Are we seeing that? We were really concerned about that based on...
Yeah, so I mean, we're not... On our end, we haven't done any analysis on as far as, you know, are people leaving the city? But when you see the number of transactions that are out there, it means that, yes, somebody's selling a property, but it means that somebody's buying it too. And folks are not buying property to have it sit there vacant. So as people are, you know, selling and perhaps leaving the city, there's somebody coming right behind them that is purchasing that property because they want to live in the city. And there are a couple of, you know, large-scale apartment projects that are still underway or have been put under contract during the pandemic. So there are still folks that want to be in the city, and they're trying to meet the need by having that supply out there of those apartment units.
Okay. Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Mr. Arrows.
Good morning.
During your testimony, you mentioned that the OPA has implemented or is in the process of implementing recommendations from reports issued in December 2018 and January 2019. On January 2019, OPA posted an action plan on its website that outlines the implementation plan and schedule for these reforms. It doesn't appear that the action plan has been updated since then to reflect the progress that OPA has made since the release of the plan over two years ago. Can you describe the specific progress made under construction quality and data enhancements category? Improving the collection of this type of data in particular is vital to ensuring accurate and fair assessments.
Sure. So we are currently in the midst of that project of capturing and collecting construction quality grade condition of properties, as I mentioned, and some property style information. We had an RFP that was issued, and we contracted with an outside vendor to assist us with that. That data collection project is ongoing at the moment. And once that's completed, we will be, you know, importing all of that data into our systems and using it to see, you know, if it makes a difference in our values and incorporating it in our modeling process as we move forward. So that project is ongoing as we speak.
What do you see as the timeline for that?
So we are anticipating to have all that information in our system and ready to be used for the assessments that will be completed next year for tax year 2023.
Thank you. So you also mentioned in your testimony that you plan to explain the assessment and valuation process to the public. How do you plan to go about doing that? And what is your action plan for community engagement around the new assessments, especially given the historic inequities, inaccuracies, and lack of transparency around these assessments in our city?
Sure. So as I mentioned, we published a number of documents on our website as required by the city code, city charter, to explain, you know, what our methodologies are, how we come about, what our ratio statistics are. And as far as community interaction, you know, we try to be as available as possible to the public. I know we have a dedicated community outreach coordinator who interfaces with just about every council office, I believe. And pre-pandemic, we were at, you know, many meetings across the city at various times. And we will fully be prepared to make ourselves available and to respond to any requests that come from other council offices, the community organizations, the RCOs, that would like to have us come out and talk to their respective groups when the next round of assessments come out. We usually get most of those requests when there is a round of assessments that come out, but we're available year-round for anybody that would like to have us come out and talk to their group.
Do you think that we should have a more proactive plan, just given traditionally, you know, how this has played out in the city?
Sure. I mean, we can certainly look at being proactive and reaching out to those organizations ahead of time and say, hey, would you like us to come out and speak as opposed to waiting for the request? You know, there are some groups that it's really a yearly standing request that we're always coming out there at a certain time to speak to them, and others, it's sort of ad hoc. You know, if they hear from their residents and they want some more information, we come out. So it's certainly something worth considering, and obviously, we were here. Well, pre-pandemic, we were here in the office all the time, but we have a number of ways to contact us to ask questions about the assessments, you know, through our citizen service portal.
Okay. Last question. What specific steps will you take to ensure that the 2023 property tax assessments do not unfairly and inequitably impact the property assessments of longtime homeowners in gentrifying neighborhoods?
So one of the things that we're going to do that is going to help with the quality of the assessments for the whole city is that we're going to be bringing in an outside consultant to do an audit of our processes and procedures and the results of the 2023 reassessment project. So we'll be able to get some real-time feedback as far as what's working, what we might need to improve ahead of the certification of the assessments. And then at the end of that, have them review what the numbers look like and look at... Do some ratio statistics, ratio studies to see, you know, how successful we were in that. So that's really the biggest thing that I could say that's going to be able for us to come back and say, you know, this is... We were successful with this, and we were able to alter this methodology in the process if there was some sort of tweaking we need to do. You know, we'd like to do that ahead of time before, you know, we finish the project.
Will that have any specific focus on equity?
Yeah, there are ratio measures that focus on equity of the level of assessment and the market value of properties. So yes, that'll be part of that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I have a point of information? If you don't mind, this is Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for point of view.
Yes. Would a gentleman commit to holding off assessments until the outside independent party comes in and clarifies the outcome of the actual evaluation they're going to do?
I cannot commit to that at this time, but it's something we will consider.
Mr. Dubow, I expected you to speak up.
So the outside auditor will be providing information to OPA as the process goes along? So whatever input they have will help during the process? So that assessment will be done kind of in coordination with the assessment that OPA is doing? So kind of by definition of the way it's working, their work will be finished before the assessment is done.
Thank you.
Good, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jamie. Councilman Gil.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Go ahead, yeah.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gil.
Thank you very much, Council President, and good morning, Mr. Arrows, and good morning, Mr. Dubow.
Morning.
Morning.
So I think, you know, one... To follow up a little bit on Councilmember Gautier is the question of re-upping the assessments and the understanding that we have not conducted or made our residents aware of assessments that have been ongoing for now two years. Is that correct?
So for tax year 2021 and for tax year 2022, which we'll be certifying next month, there was not a citywide comprehensive reassessment on all property. So for those two years, the changes that folks are seeing are pretty much restricted to chain with properties that had a change, such as a tear down, a fire, a new construction added, or exemptions or abatements that are rolling off. So their market value is becoming fully taxable. They're getting notices that says their assessment breakdown is changing, but those are pretty much the limit on folks that are getting reassessments for the tax year that is currently being certified and for the one previous.
And in your opinion, is it healthy for the city to be doing regular assessments annually?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's our goal, is to be able to be doing that on a yearly basis, reacting to the market if necessary. You know, if we come to a point of time where the market is very flat, then there's really not much for else to do if the assessments are up to date. But one of the benefits of doing yearly assessments is that if you see sustained growth in the market, as we've had in Philadelphia in certain sectors for a long period of time, you're not... You're getting that year by year as opposed to one large change a couple of years at a time. And when you see a year of growth like we had last year, you know, that number in and of itself is double digits. So, you know, we would certainly be... We would... We want to be doing this on a yearly basis, so that way folks can, you know, be expecting their notices at the same time every year, and we can keep up with the market one way or another, whichever way it's going.
I appreciate your outlining the advantages and importance of the annual assessments. I think it's clear that council can have a responsibility about what to do with regard to property taxes, but it's important for us to be able to track the assessments and understand growth that's happening within the city, particularly if there are market areas that feel outside of the norms, and we could maybe track all of that. You know, so it is your expectation from your department that OPA will move forward with a full citywide reassessment in 2023, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And in anticipation of that, I think my colleague asked about the importance of public communications, and I think you talked about how you have availability that's made to you, or you are available should people request. There's information on the website. But given the fact that there has not been a citywide reassessment in three years between 2020 and 2023, many residents could be confused, blindsided, or surprised by changes that might exist in their, you know, in their property assessments, regardless of what's happened in the market. What we've learned from our experiences around COVID, from our experiences around school reopening, is that if you expect the public to come to you, you will be blindsided by your ability to meet public demand when your rollout is clear. So I think I would say to you that I would be very dissatisfied with the communications plan that you have laid out. I think it is something that we have seen with the healthcare, with our school district, and it has largely backfired. I'm interested in hearing from you about whether you have... And the importance of learning lessons, including things like a hotline, including things like an affirmative communications plan, including things like making sure that your community outreach person doesn't just serve council offices, but actually serves community neighborhoods. So has that been discussed? And, Mr. Arrows, if you're not the person to do it, maybe, Mr. Dubow, you could step in.
So we haven't had any specific discussions as far as a communications plan or a rollout around the 2023 reassessment as of yet. But listening to your comments and some of the concerns raised previously in this meeting, it's certainly something that we're mindful of, and we will try to be proactive as possible. As I mentioned, you know, we're not only just talking with council offices all the time, but our community outreach coordinator has contacts with, I don't want to say every RCO out there, but we've been all over the city at various times, meeting requests for community involvement and coming to community meetings. So we will continue that. And, you know, as we get closer to finishing the assessments, we'll have a better sense of, you know, what kind of changes folks should expect and how we might need to coordinate and be available to the communities in advance of those assessments being issued.
And just to confirm what Mr. Arrows said, we will make sure that there is a communication plan so that, you know, people know what's coming and understand why and what kind of impacts it might have.
Yeah. I just think we cannot take a compliance-based approach towards communications. It's really got to be much more affirmative. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Council President, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Arrows. First, I wanted to start with your industry-specific credentials. Can you speak to your industry-specific credentials that make you qualify for this role?
Sure. So as I mentioned, I've been working in this industry for over 17 years now. I am a Certified Pennsylvania Evaluator, which is a designation issued by the Pennsylvania State Board of Appraisers. And I'm a member of the International Association of Assessing Officers, the IAAO, which is the global organization that sort of governs and puts out the standards on the work that we do. And I am currently a candidate for their CAE designation, which is their highest designation for someone who is working in the assessment industry.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. And I wanted to move forward to a question I had, and you noted your years of experience in OPA. So I wanted to go more so to your contracting opportunities within OPA. What is the overall goal for your minority women and disabled business enterprises for OPA?
Sure. So off the top of my head, I believe that's currently at 10 to 20%. We have a new... We have several new contracts that will be going out over the course of the next year. And we've already been in touch, you know, to make sure that we have those available and that there's offerings and opportunities for folks that meet that qualification in order to be able to be contracted with us. So we have a number of contracts that'll be going out in the next year, and that'll be a heavy focus on what we do with those.
Okay, so I wanted to repeat that. Are you talking about the actual amount of contracts that you all have engaged in? Or are you referring to your goal? My question was around, what is your goal?
Yeah, so the goal, as I said, I believe, is 10 to 20%. And we... In order to reach that goal, we have a number of contracts that are expiring right now that we will reissue and will be working. and will be working towards making sure we complete we meet that goal and not exceed it in the coming year.
Okay. And then can you just discuss the total dollar amount that was spent over the last two fiscal years with your minority contracts and vendors?
I don't have that number handy, but I we can certainly get back to you on that.
Okay, may you provide that to the Council President for the benefit of the body? I wanted to also circle back to some questions that my colleagues had specifically around the report that was commissioned relative to OPA's adherence to the code. The report found that 11 out of the 18 required processes in the Philadelphia Code, including failing to publish assessment standards on the website and others, were not adhered to. So can you just talk about the steps that you all have taken there? And then also, will your department be providing city council with the assessment studies that will help shape how you move forward with the 2023 assessments?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, we've we would go ahead and published a number of documents on our website around our most recent reassessment projects and ratio statistics and methodology explanations as required by the by the code that was that was referenced in the report is not being done. We worked towards that and published those about a year and a half, two years ago now, I guess that would be. And we were we'll be working with council with how those reports will be issued and what they'll look like as we move forward with tax year 2023. We'll be having some meetings with council representatives about that. And I'm sorry, was there one last part of the question that I did not did not address?
Sure. And when will your department be providing city council with the assessment studies that will help shape the 2023 assessments?
Sure. So as we talk, as we have the discussions about what the reports will look like upon the completion of the reassessment with council, we can also discuss how what kind of information we can provide along the way. Obviously, most of the information is going to be provided at the end once everything is completed. But we can certainly work on a timeline to provide whatever information might be requested as needed along the way.
Okay, that will be very helpful because I think that information helps council members to communicate with our constituents. And the last thing I wanted to add, you talked about the Citizen Service Portal. But in the vein of transparency and accountability, I frequently use the OPA website, you know, as I travel throughout the city. And can you speak to the feature on the website that has been disabled where you cannot search by name? So, you know, typically you can search by address, or you can search by block, but you're unable to search by name. Can you speak to why that change was made if we're, you know, seeking to increase transparency and accountability in government?
Yeah, so the the property data website that you're referring to, it's really governed by a number of city agencies, including, you know, the OPA with the information we provide. It pulls in data from LNI and some other organizations. So it's not strictly the OPA's website. And there had been some discussions at the broad level about privacy concerns and whether a search by owner would be appropriate. And the collective decision across the organizations was made to remove the property search. But the property owner information is is still available. It's just you can't search by a property owner's name.
Council President, I did hear the bell, but I wanted to to really drill down on this specific question. Can you please go into detail relative to who made this decision? And in details on on why this decision was made? Because I know that, you know, no one communicated this change specifically with my office. And I understand privacy concerns, but oftentimes there are many issues around trying to figure out exactly who's the owner of a property or how many properties they may own in the city. And we just need to have further clarity around who collectively made that decision and exactly why that happened. Thank you, Council President.
Yep, and I was part of that decision-making process. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to have an offline conversation with you about that and if that works for you.
Okay, but immediately somebody watching this will say, what are they going to talk about offline that they can't talk about on the screen? So we'll have the offline conversation, and I'm sure it will be subsequently followed by an online conversation.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Mr. Debo and Mr. Arrows.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Good morning, folks. Good morning. Thank you so much for your clarity around how we are going to draw some of the best practices and challenges around the Kama system. You know, back in 2018, 17, we had many conversations about the assessment and the historical practice by the City of Philadelphia to increase people's taxes when we did infrastructure improvements. And therefore, like, don't fix this because my taxes go up. Don't fix this because my taxes go up. I mean, for the long, long-term residents is, you know, most of the new things that are coming in shopping malls or whatever have an abatement value, what I call it, artificial value, because until you're paying taxes on it, it is not real. It is valued for your balance sheet for purposes of financing, but it is not real. But the city's practice to spread that value to long-term residents has created this real tension between improvements mean that I'm going to get a real estate increase. We passed Bill 170467. It said, part of the new formula transparency requirement is that we have to follow state law and ensure that unrealized abatement value is not factored in. Can you speak to me in layman's terms how you are ensuring that 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 unrealized value is not spread out to others?
Sure. So when we do our market value estimates, so when we say market value, we're doing an estimate as of a certain date as to what a property in a hypothetical situation between a willing buyer and a willing seller, what that transaction amount would be if it were on the open market with no undue duress and a couple other qualifiers. So when we do our valuations, we're trying our best to compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges. So if a property is brand new, three stories, you know, 3,000 square feet with a number of amenities, only properties that are like that property are being valued.
So let me stop you there. Let me stop you there. That is part of our challenge. The new abated property with three floors should not impact a long-term resident's value. So you have a property at $500,000 with abatement, and then you have a property next door that's only really worth 100 and needs 150. But the end result of our assessment process is that $100,000 property now becomes valued at $250,000, and the abated property has an artificial value. That is illegal according to state law. So how are we going to fix that? Because that's the tension we're feeling. Because once you do the market, the general market, you encompass all property. And that is where we have the rub around the city needing to capture unrealized value and spreading it out to other folks. How are we going to get people to trust if when we see a GMA, it reflects that?
Sure. So in your example, the two-story property that's next to the new construction, when we value.
Stories to three stories.
Oh, three, three stories.
You guys use this formula. Yes.
Okay, so anything that's not new construction, when we value those properties, we are not using the sales of new construction to value that property. We are looking at properties that are similar or exactly the same as that in that area, same size, same condition, and what those properties are transacting for on the open market. And then that's those are the sales we're using to estimate the value of the older property in your example. So when we go to do that, we're saying, okay, you know, this is this type of property. How many sales have we had? What are they going for? So when as we're required by law to estimate what the property would sell for on the open market, we have to use that market data for those specific types of properties. And whatever that market is bearing out at that time, those are the numbers that we're going to use to help formulate what our estimate of market value is on that older, smaller, not as nice of a condition or not as modern as as the newer properties that are getting the abatements.
So when you create the general market areas that help you get averages, how are you going to make sure that that is factored out? Because again, that becomes part of your formula base to say there's a bigger value here. How are you going to ensure that?
So we review our market areas for before each assessment is completed. So we're trying to pick up what trends are happening, which neighborhoods are now maybe more similar to other ones where the values and the types of properties, there's a similar type of demand for certain types of properties. But, you know, if 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 you're talking about properties on the same block, for example, right next to each other, those are going to be in the same geographic market area, but they're not in the same pool of sales or part of the same exact valuation process. So we go, we have a couple, we go a couple steps further than the GMA for the market area when we group properties together. So the market, the geographic market area is the first step, but then there's the size of the property, the condition, how old it is, what's its style. So there's you get much more refined than the geographic market area when we're looking at the values of the properties and what the sale prices are.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to working with you as those come up. That has not been our experience in the past, and that's a key component of us in this debate. And Council President, I just have one last question that I think is important. It goes to, what is your philosophical view on land value tax in the city when you look at Philadelphia in comparison to Boston, New York, and other places in light of our limited toolbox and our uniformity challenge?
So tax policy question specifically is is not is not under our purview. So I will defer to Mr. Debo on that if he has any comments. But I'm looking forward to your webinar coming up soon just to to hear what your thoughts are on that.
AJ gave a great answer. I don't know whether I can top that.
Rob and I have had too many debates about this already.
He's learning from you, Rob.
Yes.
I think it's a conversation, again, as we talk about fairness and and GMAs and value again around long-term residents, we really need to take that into consideration. We have penalized, again, these are bad practices of the past. We fixed your house, you got a new assessment, your taxes went up. We really have disincentivized housing preservation. And for an old city, again, when you look at Boston and others, this is a challenge. So I look forward to this debate with you. It's one that we should be having as we go and build that capacity to have to have annual assessments. So thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next up, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, and great minds think alike. Because I was going to ask about land value tax, and that was a very, very good adjustment, Mr. Arrows. I see you've learned very quickly from Sensei Debo on how to definitely answer questions in a creative way. But it does seem prior to the pandemic, especially with properties that had a tax abatement, there was an increase in assessment on land for those properties, which some have called that a backdoor land value tax. So could you provide some perspective on, you know, prior to the pandemic, from your experience, that increase on the land value assessment, especially for properties that had a tax abatement?
Sure. So for all properties throughout the city, several years ago, we revised the methodology of how we value underlying land or residual land, however you would like to refer to it as. So the land part portion of the assessment as part of a whole, when the property has a building on it. So we switched to a methodology of an allocation percentage based on the location of the property and the condition of the property. So we start with the overall market value of the property, and then based on conditioned location, a specific percentage of that overall market value is allocated to the land as we have to break out assessments for land and building. And that was, you know, from a methodology perspective, we thought that was gave us a better way to value the land. And obviously, that did affect some of the properties with abatements, but it was not a specific project to value properties that had abatements or did not. It was it was citywide, and just about every property, residential property in the city was affected when we did that that change in methodology.
So based on a change in methodology and using the allocation, you were allocating more the value on the land as part of the entire valuation of the parcel, including the structure on it?
Yeah, so there were changes both ways. In some cases, the land allocation caused an increase in the the land value attributed as part of the market value. In other in other cases, it went down. So if you think of some of the neighborhoods in the city, northeast, northwest, where you have very large parcels of land or larger than your average city parcel, trying to do a rate per square foot method becomes problematic because then you're putting almost, you know, 80, 90, 100% of the value on the land, even at a very low rate per square foot. So in trying to be consistent across the city and how we we value the land, the allocation methodology, which is used in a number of other jurisdictions, is the one we chose to adopt for the most recent couple of assessments we have done. And the changes went both ways, where people saw their land value decrease as part of it, the overall percentage, and and other cases where the land value increased as part of the overall percentage.
Two other quick questions before my time is up. I know you're very familiar with the actual value initiative that we've had in years past. Can you get to a perspective or give a perspective in your role now on assessments, how we'll get away from having to have this long span of time before we do regular assessments and try to do it on a time period that makes the most sense for the citizens in the city of Philadelphia? But at the same point, make sure we're capturing appreciation and value of homes. And what would be that correct time period to do that citywide assessment and how often?
Sure. So, you know, moving forward, beginning with at this point, tax year 2023, you know, we want to be looking at that on a yearly basis. So it doesn't mean that everybody's property value would change necessarily every year, but we want to be in a position, we expect to be in a position where, on a yearly basis, we're reviewing to see where, you know, where our values are now compared to where we've seen changes in the market since the last reassessment. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, if a market is relatively flat, then there may not be any changes or very few changes that would be part of any reassessment. If the market goes down, we will react accordingly as well. It's not it's not one way here. Every reassessment we have done has had tens of thousands of decreases in market value going out to taxpayers if that's what we determined was, you know, the market at the time. But we anticipate, and it is certainly our goal, to be reviewing and, if necessary, issuing new assessments on a yearly basis, beginning with tax year 2023.
And one last question, I think you may have touched on this earlier in your presentation in reference to the current status of KAMA and implementation and how that will also help going forward with more regular assessments, both on residential and commercial.
Yeah, so one of the great things about the KAMA system is that it's taking information that we house in a number of different data silos, if you will, and bringing it all under one umbrella and really streamlining our processes, modernizing a number of the processes. And all of that will, you know, improve our efficiency and, you know, lead to the ability to be, you know, doing these assessments year over year in a much quicker and a much more hopefully effective fashion.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good morning. Nothing personal to you, but I hate the entire thing. I've opposed it. I'm against it. I'm for like defund OPA. And I'm joking, but I'm serious. I can remember first coming on to city council, I think it was my second year, I was hearing about KAMA. And every year after that, we've asked about KAMA. It's up, it's running, it needs some tweaks, it's fixed. I'm entering my 10th year, and it's beyond like perverse that we're continuing to talk about this system that doesn't exist, which means all these years, there's been like an eyeball, if even that, assessment process that city council through an independent audit determined was below industry standards. I introduced the bill to reject those assessments, give people back their money. They're overtaxed. And I believe that is the basis of gentrification at its core because it really kicks out people who cannot afford to pay for that difference. Now, you're it sounds like you're getting ready to talk about record property assessments. It is nothing that I am familiar with. I see COVID. I see joblessness. I see businesses, small businesses, that won't reopen. I see people moving out to the to the rural areas of Pennsylvania, if not. I know we got people coming from New York, but people are not planning to be in this city. Violence, joblessness, tourism is down. You want to check about tourism and tourism dollars? No concerts? No concerts, no restaurants, none of these things are going on. How are you coming up with these record-high assessments? I understand there are some big expensive condos and apartments being built, but people are not living well. How can their properties be assessed even more high? I would expect the assessments to go down. And quite frankly, what, what you were asked is absolutely the case. When someone does a abated, ten-year abatement improvement, it is not supposed to impact the surrounding properties. And yet it does, we see that it does. And then when we look at near my neighborhood, yeah, the houses look the same. The incomes inside the houses are dramatically different, and it's not because of the property. It's because University of Penn provides financial incentives and insistence, depending on what side of the street you live in. You cannot assess surrounding properties based on that. The methodology is wrong. I, I, I don't know what to do. Introduce a charter change to require like certain things be done, you know, I, you know? This is a huge problem. It's not okay. Uh, it has, you know, you cannot, this OPA office has never been able to even remotely come close to proper assessments year by year. Councilman Squill has suggested you do a quarter of the city each year. I agree with that. Give people a respite, let them get their feet settled in and their finances straight. But right now, in this financial crisis, you're talking about jacking up property taxes. That's the people in our city. And we're looking at a potential statewide property tax increase. I mean, I, I think this is a serious problem. I'm just complaining, but, but I, I, I'm going to do something, whatever little me can do. This is a tragic problem. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you.
Uh, Council President, if I could just say one thing for the record, I am not predicting anything for specifically for what assessments may be a year from now. There's a lot of time and a lot of market data. I was simply responding to the Council President's specific question as to what we've seen and what is publicly available, published data and analysis as far as where the markets have been. But we're a year away, and I, I make no predictions or assumptions of what markets will look like a year from now as we finalize assessments.
Listen, thank you very much. It's not against you personally. I have been kind of like annoyed beyond containment for years now. Council President knows, and you just have been sitting there. But, you know, I, I certainly thank you for your service. I look forward to the good work that you do, but this is a fight for sure. Thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, uh, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Arrows. You know, I just want to start off, and I want to, you know, ditto my colleague David O., because I feel the frustration as well. And I just think that these assessments, and I know that you're saying that you're just, you know, you're not predicting, you're just basically making a statement based on what you see right now, but I think that these assessments, when they come forward in the future from the city of Philadelphia, have the capacity to either make or break this city. And I, I think that that should not be lost on any of us, that what happens here is really going to be, you know, it's going to be monumental, one way in a positive way or another way in a negative way. It's, it's going to have a significant impact, and I just don't want that to be lost in the, in the conversation. Most of my questions from earlier were, have actually already been answered. But I did want to say, as, as you're moving around and the conversation is about assessments, that I just really want to encourage you to do something a little more proactive in terms of reaching out to communities and especially communities that are in the throes of gentrification. In my district, there are significant parts of Germantown that I would say, you know, fit the bill, that have been, you know, people have lived there generation after generation, and, you know, and it's changing. And so where do the people who are leaving, where do they go? And so that has to be a question that we have to really thoroughly answer, and we have to make sure that people are not displaced out of a neighborhood, that they've been living in for generations and now they are taxed out of that neighborhood. So I really want to just make sure that as you move forward, that the work that you do around outreach and communications is paramount, because, you know, you, you really need to make sure people understand what's happening. And also with the property assessments, I should be able to calculate my own property assessment based on the formulas that you have laid out. So we want to make sure that that information is provided and that it's, you know, a very easy to understand and to calculate and to absorb. So that being said, Mr. President, most of my questions otherwise have been answered already, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think I have an echo there. Hopefully that's okay. But, um, my question is, is there a way to send out, when we send out a notice, we could also send out what the probable tax bill would be? Because most people get a notice in the mail and they see the assessment is going up and it, uh, might have been a hundred and eighty thousand, and now it's two hundred thousand, they say, okay, and they put it to the side. They don't realize their tax bill is going up, however much it is. When you send that assessment out, is it possible to send out a, a possible bill amount if the rate stays the same or whatever? This would be your, your new tax bill?
Yeah, so from the assessment side, obviously, the assessment plays one, one large important role of the, the tax process. We do our best to keep those conversations as separate as possible, because, you know, we're not going to speak specifically to the taxes about a property, but I will let Mr. Dubois jump in and talk about the, the tax side of it.
Yeah, and we have talked about that in the past. I think that the one thing that concerns us is that the assessments go out well before the budget process, so that if there's a change in the rate and we've put a rate and a tax on the assessment bill, we'll have given people bad information. So...
Well, we, we mention this every year, but the understanding that if you put, if the tax rate doesn't change, this is what your bill would be. If council raises the tax rate, your bill will go up. Uh, is that something that we could say? I mean, you know, the, the, the challenge is when the people get it, they still don't associate an assessment with an increase in the tax. I mean, at least most of the people in my district who says, oh, I got the assessment thing, but I didn't realize I was going to raise my tax this much money. And, and therefore, you know, by the time the tax comes, it's too late to appeal, where the challenges that reach those people have to be able to pay them or go on the payment plan become more of a problem. There's got to be a way that we could offer that. And I understand what you're saying, that that tax rate may not, say, your tax may be this if the rate stays the same, but if the, if the city changes that rate, you will pay a greater amount or something like that, so they know.
No, I understand. I understand the issue. I think, you know, the, the two things that we have to figure out, and we're definitely open to discussions to figure out what there is around it, is to avoid that confusion and to make sure that people understand the, there's an assessment process and a tax process, and maybe it's, you know, two separate documents in the same envelope, but it's definitely something we should talk about and figure out what there's a way to do.
All right, well, we've been talking about it for a long time, uh, and so now I think we want to try to do something about it.
Yep, agree.
All right, the other thing is, now that all these changes with KAMA system has come there, and, and AJ, first, I want to thank you for your responsiveness, because I know we are always contacting OPA for information for our constituents, and then you've been very responsive, we appreciate that. The coordination with revenue, now, we always had a hard time, whether it was an appeal process or whether it was just assessments that OPA has one numbers and Revenue has something else. Is that system now in place where as soon as KAMA system has the assessment process or an appeal has been filed, once that's inputted, that Revenue gets that information immediately?
Yeah, so the process of transmitting to Revenue is not changing in the sense that once the value is input finalized and approved on the OPA side, it's transferred to Revenue. That timeframe is pretty much the same, because that's, that's usually on a very quick basis. But for the whole process from start to finish, we're seeing a, a much more quicker turnaround time on the OPA side as changes are made, they're input directly into the computer system. There's no more printing out a paper document that you have to sign, walk over to somebody else, walk over to sign, give to somebody else to put back into a system to get more people to sign and then send to Revenue. With the KAMA system, it's, you input the number and there's a couple clicks of approval, and then it gets sent over to Revenue to be updated very quickly. So that whole process from start to finish is much faster than it was prior to KAMA, but the actual transmission of OPA to Revenue does not necessarily get any, any faster, but it's the OPA side that's really going to be a quicker turnaround.
All right, with, with technology today, is that something we can't do? I mean, is, is there a way that KAMA can send this data directly over to Revenue so that they have it where, you know, by the time we see it on the screen as one thing and then you call Revenue, it's another thing, and they're still not coordinated? There's no way for us to coordinate both systems to do this?
So we do. So, so we upload our changes on a nightly basis, and then Revenue pulls those changes on a daily basis as well. So there's really not more than, once a value is finalized in our system, there's not more than a day or two that Revenue does not pick up that value change.
Oh, all right, so if, if somebody appeals a, a case and Revenue and OPA and puts that appeal number in, that appeal number is now, within a day, Revenue has that, and our, people are paying taxes on that amount?
Yeah, so if the, so if the OPA inputs a BRT decision, for instance, that says the property value is now this, and we put in our system, it gets the approvals that are necessary, it's finalized, that goes right over to Revenue. So if we close that change out in our system at two o'clock in the afternoon, it doesn't go over to Revenue at 2:01, but it goes over either the next day or the day after as they pull our information. So it's not instant by the second, but it's within a day or two.
Okay, well, that's great to hear, because that has been a challenge for our office all along. Um, and you mentioned the assessment process, and we know the last couple of years, assessments were sort of on hold. They have done some assessments, periodic assessments on new sales and stuff like that. So this year, supposedly, it is a citywide assessment, is that correct?
Uh, for 2023, it will be. For 2022, which are the assessments, we'll certify in the coming weeks, it is, there's not a citywide reassessment.
Right, but the next one going out using the KAMA system will be a, a citywide assessment?
Yes.
All right, and that, that information go, gets to the residents when?
So we're required to certify our assessments at the end of March, and the notices are typically mailed out within a few weeks of that. How quickly do they go out and when folks start to receive them, it depends on the, the volume of assessments and the number of changes that are going out, but it's within a, a few weeks of the certification is when the owners typically get the notice of assessment change.
So is that in May, March?
So i- in the past, typically, the, and I won't use last year as a reference, because that was a pandemic, and I certainly hope that next year, we're not having any pandemic considerations as far as the timing of, of what we do, but it, it's usually the notices are sent out and received in the month of April.
April, okay. So they'll get it in April, next year in April, we'll start to get our assessments going out to our residents. I'll come back for more questions, but at that point, we'll see what the, how, how many people's assessments have changed, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions at that time. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, and good to see you, Mr. Arrows and Rob. I want to go back to your earlier comments that I know are of great importance, particularly to our, our district council members, when you talked about the significant, in response to, to Council President Clark's question about the significant level of the increase in sales in the midst of a pandemic, and you noted that selling and buying has been frequent. Is it possible for you all to map for us by council district so that district council members sort of get an opportunity to see where trends are, are developing in specific regions in their district? If it's a high turnover, I expect, for example, in my district, it is not simply, you know, because people are, you know, you know, moving to the suburbs, but for me, because of the aging constituency, right, and the, the lot of silver foxes, we call them in the district, who have, have passed away. We are seeing families who are not holding on to the properties, right, because, you know, they, you know, they've had a tangled title, or a lot of debt has been consumed. Or for me, another thing we're seeing is reverse mortgages. So can you, can you heat map that for us so that we can see that as a city, but specifically by council district, so that we can identify, we can see any trends taking place there?
Sure, I, yeah, there's a number of standard mapping that we do as part of any reassessment that we provide to the council members as requested, but we can certainly take a look at that as, as it pertains to sales information specifically, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, sales and purchase, because it also look, when the properties change hands, we get new residents, right? And sometimes when you get new residents in the community, sort of quality of life, the people who are long-term owner occupants who have been there, they live a certain, you know, way, new people coming in. So it tells us sometimes that we need to go into a specific area and, and maybe do a canvas, so that information would be extremely helpful. Thank you so much. I now want to follow up on Councilwoman Gims' comments about sort of lessons learned and making sure we're paying attention to those, and I want to thank her for putting that on the record as it relates to affirming that the city shouldn't employ a sort of non-compliance-based approach when, and, you know, moving forward, when we get to 2023 and we're conducting those full citywide assessments. So I want to embrace her notion that we should be much more proactive and we should learn some lessons, so to speak, from the past. With that in mind, I also want to thank Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson, because I know she just paid attention to a lesson we all learned. She specifically asked you to note for the record what were your credentials that prepared you and ensured that you were qualified for the position that you are in front of us for today. And I want to thank you, Mr. Arrows, for just affirming your seventeen years, for affirming your academic credentials and all of the ways that you are involved in, in, in the industry. So that's extremely important for the public to note that we do have that on the public record. Now, I want to give you a bit of advice that normally doesn't come to council until the end game, and by the time it gets to us, we're usually able to say it was done all wrong. And this goes back to Councilwoman Gautier, when she said, when it comes time to communicate with the public, we need to be proactive in contacting community-based organizations. So I'm thinking of this, these are the basics, and this is for your communications team, if they're paying attention. Housing counseling agencies, our CLSs, the senior laws, VIPs, RCOs, senior centers, Philadelphia Association of CDCs, churches, this is extremely important, because when you come back before us and when these assessments are going out, everybody and their mother's going to call our office and says, I had no idea, right, that there was the potential for increase or this was happening. So I also want to request that you very formally, aside from what I just off the top of my head threw out there, I would like for your staff to send an email out to all members of council, formally asking us for a list of community-based organizations in our respective districts that we know interact, and, and this is very important, who are credible. I know I'm biased, I just don't believe that there's anybody in this city who knows a council district better than the district council person and/or our at-large people, because they travel from one end of the city to the other. So ask them formally for a list, and, but if, if this is done accurately, and I'm not a technical person, you would have by council district in an Excel spreadsheet, every community-based organization that we are recommending that you communicate with here in this city. And then as you move forward, if someone is saying that they don't know, it won't be because the city didn't have a strategic plan well in advance to reach out. be because the city didn't have a strategic plan well in advance to reach out to those respective constituencies. Tell me, how does that sound to you? Is that something you think you can do?
Absolutely, I think it makes perfect sense that if we're trying to reach the broadest swath of people as possible, as far as the organizations go, courting that or at least reaching out to the to the districts and even to the at-large members would be beneficial as far as pointing us to anybody that if we want to be proactive and reach out or at least know what organizations are out there that may want to talk to us. Yeah, it makes perfect sense. And and to be honest, when I was talking earlier about, you know, districts that we have, you know, standing meetings with, your your district is the one that comes to mind because we've been doing meetings for you from back when you were at the state level. So your budget town halls, you know, we're regulars there on a yearly basis in a non-pandemic environment. So, you know, we're, like I said, we're available and we're happy to help coordinate any potential outreach with the districts to make sure we can reach as many people as possible.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair Recognize Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, James, for being here today. And just by background, James, can you just clarify again your years of working with OPA?
Yeah, so I've been I've been with the city in the assessment field here for over seventeen years now, so that would have started when everything was under the BRT and then as we transitioned to OPA.
Okay, and you know, the reason that you are here is because members of council didn't have faith in your former predecessor, his leadership of leading OPA. Are you, do you understand that's the reason why you have been nominated for this particular position?
I've been nominated, I believe, because Mr. Duboe and the finance team and the mayor consider me qualified. You know, whatever council's predispositions with my predecessor, you know, not really my point to speak to that.
I just want to go on the record, I just want to go on the record, right? You know, I believe you are qualified, but the purpose of why the administration decides to nominate a new person, who is yourself, is based upon on the failure of leadership of your predecessor. That's and I'll say that for the record, that's why we commissioned our own study, separate from the administration, to look at how properties are being assessed here in the city of Philadelphia. And so I really want to get a understanding and an idea because you have been there for seventeen years, right? Really, more about your vision around a couple of different areas. And so, one, a lot of people after ABI have lost a lot of faith in this process, particularly because as we not only talk about the issue of gentrification, I have a very, very diverse district. And so after the last two property assessments, this has impacted individuals living Point Breeze the same way as they have impacted senior citizens who live in Packer Park, who don't who do not qualify, who do not qualify for any type of tax relief measures that will allow them to help stay inside their homes if they're on fixed incomes. And so give me an idea of how you would restore that faith in this particular office when it comes to property assessments and the disparities of how properties are assessed on a block. We have had reports where on one side of the street, properties are assessed at a certain value, and on across the street, on that same block, a house is assessed at a totally different value. One may be higher, one may be lower, right? Which has eroded the trust in some of my constituents. Also, prior to two thousand and nineteen, when I hosted a hearing around ABI and property assessments, we weren't publishing the assessment methodology on our website. After two thousand and nineteen, we actually started to, but nevertheless, from my understanding, what we published didn't meet the industry requirement based upon Washington DC municipal government, which is also listed as what's required in our city code. How are we going to meet those standards? And then the last part of my question is, prior to the pandemic, we've had significant, a significant backlog and property assessment appeals. And you have also had staff cut out of the office of OPA. How are we going to address that? And so those three things I would like for you to address.
Okay, let me go back to the first, the first question. So really, three, three things that I think we can focus on as far as, you know, getting people confident that the assessments are fair and equitable. The first part is obviously making sure, you know, our data is up to date. So as I mentioned earlier, we have the project going on right now to collect and verify elements of data that we already have, but to make sure we're up to date, as up to date as possible. Things change daily, right, throughout the city in some cases, but, you know, we want to be as recent as we can be for the data that we're analyzing as far as the values. And also, as part of the recommendations, you know, determining if we need to change how we classify or certain descriptions of the properties that would that would make it easier and better to do some of the mass appraisal work. Second part of that would be, you know, bringing in the outside auditor to go through everything and issue recommendations or report or whatever. You know, that's not us evaluating ourselves, that's somebody from the outside doing that. So an impartial third party and being able to have those results speak to the work we're doing. And then, third thing I'll mention with that, as I mentioned in my my testimony, the International Association of Assessing Officers, or the IAAO for short, which is the governing body of the work we do throughout the world, they issue something called the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. So there's a there's a process to go through to earn that, but if you earn that, you are considered essentially an award-winning jurisdiction. And that's that's an accreditation that's issued worldwide for, you know, the best of the best in the assessment field for jurisdiction. So my long-term vision is I don't see any reason why we will not be able in the future to qualify for that. And I think, you know, being able to achieve that would be a great credit to the staff here and it would be something that the citizens of Philadelphia could hopefully be proud of. So with the DC report you mentioned specifically, that goes back to what I talked about earlier as far as communicating with council and representatives from council as to what that report will look like. Those are discussions we'll be having ahead of the next, probably fairly soon, actually, to start that conversation, but we'll be going through all of that and what to expect and what we can produce for the two thousand and twenty-three reassessment and how that's going to look using the DC model, as you mentioned. And then as far as the the appeals backlog, I know the BRT is working diligently to get through the appeals as quickly as they can. Like, like most folks, they they had to make a transition and their their hearings right now are fully virtual and but they're scheduling and getting through as quickly as they can and we're working with them to make sure that we can answer and testify as needed with that.
Is part of your strategy to request the increase in the budget since staff was cut to address the backlogs and assessment appeals?
So.
Leadership, young man.
Well, yeah, I don't I don't want to get too far ahead with the budget and, and, you know, save that for for the next discussion. But separate from the appeal issue, you know, we we have vacant positions that we certainly wish to fill. There was nobody that was laid off in the OPA as part of any part of the budget process so far. But, yeah, we are looking to to fill vacancies to help, you know, get through any backlog of any type of work, you know, appeals or whatnot.
And I'm just going to wrap up just with last, one last aspect. And I like that you have a focus on achieving the IAAO standards of excellence for OPA for the city of Philadelphia. So thank you for having the goal. I do want to state for the record that City Council's report, her analysis, said the OPA did not meet the IAAO standards. And so from, but this is a new day, and so I support strong young leadership, but this is a very serious and critical issue because at the end of the day, it's between somebody living in their home and being homeless, just to be, so this is how really serious it is, particularly as relates not only my district, but also my colleagues' districts across the city of Philadelphia. And so thank you for taking time out of your schedule and being here today and thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Council President Darrell Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. City Control's report. Okay. Chair Recognize is Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Mr. Arrows. I just have a quick question, comment. In the past, we've used outside appraisers to help the OPA, you know, with knowledge of the market and getting accurate appraisals. It might be a good idea for us to continue that practice. I think we used, I think maybe Hughes Appraisal Services in the past, but you also, you might want to expand that practice to even the residential neighborhoods and have third-party people assist you if possible when you have questions. And it can be very helpful, I think, to you in making sure these assessments are accurate. There's nothing like getting another opinion and having the data. I just wanted to mention that and unfortunately, I have to leave. I wish you well and, Council President, I could be noted as voting aye on all the appointments for today. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any additional questions by members? See any, there being none?
I have a question, Council President. Sorry, I put it in the chat box.
It just popped up, sir. Councilwoman? Yeah.
Real briefly, just in response to the Councilmember Squill's question, it appears to me it's pretty simple to put a statement that any increase or decrease in your assess in your assessment may have a, you know, corresponding increase or decrease in your property taxes. It's a very neutral statement and I I hope that it doesn't take us like nine years to come up with like simple solutions like that because it's very disturbing. So I hope we can do that and I too have a meeting to go to, so I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all the matters before this body.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
To the Councilman's point there, I don't have the current language in front of me, but I currently we send out information with a notice that says, this is not a tax bill, but it plays an important part on what your tax bill may be. And the level of description, I don't know off the top of my head, but we have communicated, sorry, communicated that to some level, but as Mr. Duboe spoke to earlier, you know, we will certainly take that under consideration for expanding or changing the language moving forward.
Thank you very much. Big red box, big red letters, so you can get people's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Arrows. Appears to be no additional questions. Want to thank you very much for your testimony. It appears we'll be looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please disconnect. Mr. Christmas, please call our next witness.
Our next witness is Diana Cortez, nominee to be city solicitor.
Thank you. How are you doing?
Good for you today, Council President.
Good, no problem. Yeah, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Of course, Diana Cortez, C-O-R-T-E-S, and I will proceed with my statement. Good morning, Wenos Diaz, Council President Clark, and esteemed council members of the Committee of the Whole. I am Diana Cortez, the acting city solicitor for the city of Philadelphia. I have held this position since December eleventh, two thousand and twenty, and I am humbled and honored by the opportunity to serve as city solicitor. I'm grateful to Mayor Kenny for proposing my appointment. I appreciate your consideration of me for this appointment and I am grateful for the opportunity to testify before city council, seeking your confirmation. I grew up in Dover, New Jersey, which is a small town that is about ninety percent Latinx in a predominantly white and affluent North Jersey County. My parents, both Costa Rican immigrants, left their families and country to seek the American dream for themselves and ultimately my brothers and me. They raised us in a bilingual home where we were proud of our heritage, especially in the face of any discrimination we we experienced. We were also raised to embrace any and all opportunities and challenges and continue to demonstrate to ourselves and the world what we could accomplish. Empowered by my parents' love, work ethic, and pride, I graduated third in my class at Dover High School and went on to obtain a Bachelor of Science in Industrial Labor Relations from Cornell University. I am convinced this upbringing also prepared me for finding my adult home here in the city of Philadelphia. I have lived and practiced law here since graduating Villanova Law School in two thousand and six. I began my legal career clerking for now Chief Judge of the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, Juan Sanchez. I then worked for five years at the international law firm of Morgan Lewis and Bacius, representing Fortune 500 Pharmaceutical and Manufacturing Companies in White Collar Crime Investigations and Commercial Litigation Matters. I also carried an active pro bono practice ranging from assisting asylum applicants on their path to safety to also helping veterans fight for disability benefits. I then worked at the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office for two years, where I tried hundreds of preliminary hearings and trials in both adult and juvenile courtrooms. Afterwards, I worked at Marshall Dennehy, Warner, Coleman, and Goggan, focusing on civil rights, employment discrimination, and tort claims. In the spring of two thousand and eighteen, my predecessor, former city solicitor Marcel Pratt, asked me to assume his prior role as the Law Department's Chair of the Litigation Group, which comprises of six units and approximately seventy attorneys. In that role, as its first Latina, I oversaw the city's litigation matters and directly supervised some of the city's most significant court cases, some of which include Fulton versus City of Philadelphia, where a team of child welfare affirmative litigation and appeals attorneys prevailed before Judge Tucker at the district court level and then later at the Third Circuit, convincing both courts to affirm the city's decision to not enter into a contract with Catholic Social Services because of its refusal to consider same-sex couples as foster parents. This case has received national attention and is currently under review by the Supreme Court of the United States. I've also worked with the matter regarding Vision Quest at fifty-two oh one Old York Road, where we successfully successfully fought Vision Quest when it tried to move unaccompanied minors into that facility, even though it was a violation of its existing use permit. And finally, we also worked on lost and stolen firearms, where we filed, where I filed the city's first lost and stolen firearms civil prosecution and succeeded in having the permanent injunction denied. These examples demonstrate my commitment and ability to provide high-quality legal representation to both city council and the administration. And through these cases and so many others, I have had the pleasure and opportunity to see firsthand the talent, legal prowess, and undying dedication of the public servants who serve the city of Philadelphia in the Law Department and also in other city agencies. Like my esteemed predecessors, Sozi Tolante and Marcel Pratt, I remain committed to providing high-quality representation, upholding the attorney-client privilege, and ensuring confidentiality over all communications with me and each of my clients. These are hallmarks of the attorney-client relationship, which are sacred to me. I would like to also address a few of my plans for the Law Department before opening it up to questions. First, I will build upon the great work of my predecessors to continue to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion within the Law Department. Under my leadership, the Law Department will maintain its Mansfield certification. This this certification requires interviewing fifty percent or more women or diverse applicants for each supervisory position. At the Law Department, we will expand that for every single vacancy we have. We will also ensure that each interview panel has at least one diverse person and that the interview includes questions focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We will also add a diversity, equity, inclusion assessment to the annual performance evaluation for each individual at the Law Department. Second, the Law Department will continue to work with the administration, city council, and Philadelphia Police Department on police reform. This past year, the Law Department was a working partner in the city's efforts. We worked to defend and affirm the police department's first termination of an officer in the Facebook Plainview Project. We will continue to negotiate specific injunctive relief in the litigations arising out of police responses to protest activity. We'll also continue to support and advise the police department as they look to implement reformative efforts, addressing excessive force and disproportionate stops of people of color, and as they work to improve the culture of the department for their diverse officers. We will also look to continue to work with you all at city council and state legislators to revise Act one eleven. And we will also work with the mayor's Office of Labor Relations and the police department to fight for significant changes to the upcoming collective bargaining agreement. Lastly, I will continue to work with the administration and with you all at city council in identifying affirmative litigations that address the concerns and goals of the city, such as in public safety, where we have to come up with such as in public safety, where we have to come up with creative ways to combat the pervasive and devastating gun violence in our city, which begins with increased and illegal access to firearms. We're also looking into litigations involving public health, where we're going to continue to fight the, our, we're going to continue to fight against targeted marketing of tobacco, opioids, and other fatal vices to our neighborhoods of color. And also, we're looking to expand any, explore and expand any type of litigate, affirmative litigation on environmental efforts. City Council has been a true partner in all of these foregoing efforts, and I look forward to your continued ideas and collaboration. Thank you for the privilege of testifying before you today. It would be the honor of a lifetime to serve as a city solicitor of Philadelphia. I'm happy to answer any of the questions you may have.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cortez. How are you? Thank you for coming.
I'm good. How are you?
Um, just had a couple of questions. And I think you've had an opportunity to talk to all, if not most members, uh, to discuss, um, you know, and so I'll just, I'll just ask you a couple of brief questions. Um, so you referenced the law, the gun lawsuits. Can you give me, uh, give me the specifics? I think was, was there recently something, a filing that we just did? Or give me, can you just update us on both of those cases?
Of course. So regarding the, um, so the first matter is Crawford et al. Versus, um, the Commonwealth, and that's the lawsuit we filed back in October. Uh, we filed that lawsuit. The defendants have filed motions to dismiss or preliminary objections in the Commonwealth Court, and their briefs are due in March, and our responses are due in April. So right now that, nothing has been decided yet. Um, and I think we're all, uh, amicus briefs. So if you or any others have organizations that would be interested in filing some type of amicus brief, that would be due in April, um, as well. So that's that first lawsuit. And then the lost and stolen firearms lawsuit, we are, um, we receive, we had that great ruling of the permanent injunction being denied. The defendant has appealed it, and so we are awaiting Judge Wright's decision outlining, you know, the reasons why he denied it. And that would give the defendant, you know, the basis for his appeal.
That's the lost and stolen?
Correct.
All right. Okay. All right. So we look forward to that. And, um, just keep us abreast as we move along, so we can be engaged in whatever way, shape, or form possible. So, um, had this conversation with you, um, had it with Marcel, had it with Sozi. Um, I don't think that, and this is obviously not reflecting upon yourself. Um, I don't think that the city solicitor can represent the City Council of Philadelphia and the Mayor's Office, you know, equally. It's just inconsistent with the realities of having two clients on a co-equal basis that at some point in time, we'll have a conflict in terms of, one, their interpretation of the law, their, the interpretation of jurisdiction, the interpretation of a particular fiscal matter, whatever. Some point, we're not going to agree. And, uh, started with Sozi when I asked him, you know, how he was going to deal with that. And, you know, as time went on, I, I want to say that he, uh, did not attempt to change the charter, although I did have. And probably still have in my desk. And I hope I'm not, uh, I hope, I hope not to influence any members of council that I was going to introduce a charter change to have a city lawyer that was an elected lawyer. And a lot of people said, we got enough politicians, so they didn't want to do that. So I backed off of it. But I need to hear from you. As we are co, co-brancis of government, checks and balances. Where the legislator, there's the executive. Tell me how you, how you want to handle that, or how you anticipate handling that.
Now, that's.
Be a conflict.
And Council President, I think you said the key words in, you know, when you spoke earlier, you said at some point. So right now, I think the potential for conflict is inherent, as you pointed out. But I think the difference is when it was, when is there an actual legal conflict? And I think as you've seen, um, you know, through Sozi and then through Marcel, those, those instances are actually far and few between. And if and when those do occur, the charter does provide for that safety valve provision where we would provide you conflict counsel. Otherwise, I, I sort of view City Council and the administration and all the other 30 or so city agencies that we represent sort of as a family where there is going to be disagreements on certain issues. But at the end of the day, my role as the city solicitor is to identify and call the legal balls and strikes. And as to these other issues, that's, that's not my lane. So I'm going to stay in the legal lane as to whether something is legally enforceable or legally valid. Um, and then I will give that opinion. Um, and so I think as demonstrated through the different, um, the different lawsuits, at least we were able to work together. It shows that there is that great opportunity to provide that high-quality legal representation, which we had done with both under Sozi and Marcel, and I plan to continue that.
Okay, so in the family, there's always going to be a squabble. And usually, it's the mom, uh, of the family that kind of like, you know, calls the balls and strikes. Um, and I don't know if you consider yourself in the future to play that role, but.
I would say an aunt. I don't, I don't think I want to be the parent. I would say that aunt.
I think, I, you know, but I, I, I have that role to some degree sometimes in this legislative body, um, like the, the old uncle. I hope I'm not the old crazy uncle, but I, you know, sometimes I had to play the role of the old uncle. Um, so in the past, what has happened, the legislative branch was always offered an alternative counsel, meaning that, you know, there was a dispute between the two. The council was offered to get their own lawyer to handle their perspective on a particular issue. Is there ever, or would there ever be a chance when the executive branch would be offered an alternative counsel? I mean, why does it always have to be City Council that would have to have the alternative representative, incentive, and not the executive branch have the alternative representative? See that right there, when that's happened in the past, and Sozi and Marcel, they did a great job. Why do we have to be offered the alternative? Maybe we would prefer to have the city solicitor represent us, and then the mayor can have hired outside counsel. And I did one year, I was going to ask you these questions. So I'm, I'm not throwing you curveballs. All right.
No, you, you definitely did. Um, I think it would depend on, you know, what was the legal question? I think the legal question presented to me as to these different, um, ordinances, I think that is the official legal position of the, um, you know, of the city solicitor's office. So it's more so when there's a difference, I think, of legal opinion, I think, given that it is the city solicitor's position, then I think it would just naturally have to be, you know, if you or the City Council members would have a difference of opinion or would want, I think, just the way the charter is written, it's just, it's set up that way, that it would have to be conflict counsel for, um, for City Council. However, again, like I stated, I think those instances are actually very few and far between. I think in the past, um, as a litigation chair, there hasn't been that many instances in which we had to obtain, uh, conflict counsel because in the, at the end of the day, we, all the interest, the legal interests were aligned. We're not talking policy or some of these other, um, side disagreements as to the legal conflict, um, they've been few and far between.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to belabor that point, but it, it, as I said earlier, it will come up. I guarantee you. Uh, so, um, you sound like you're prepared to deal with it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President and Ms. Cortez. Thank you, and, um, congratulations on your, um, legal career. Uh, we had a chance to talk, um, earlier in reference to some of the issues and concerns that I've raised. Um, I noticed in your testimony, you talked about Act 111. Uh, I know, wanted to just follow up with you in that regard. Um, through my, you know, work with Pennsylvania Municipal League, that's one of the issues that we've been working on. Um, actually, two weeks ago, we had a call with Governor Wolf about Act 111. And you'll be surprised, the number of cities around the Commonwealth that has also had concerns with Act 111. Um, various cities do not have their own, uh, city solicitor like you, but they also, but they do have outside counsel. So to the extent that there are opportunities to work collaboratively with other jurisdictions, um, and their counsel, and I can provide you with those cities, um, that could be an opportunity to continue to work regarding Act 111, um, and continue the work that's been done in this council and also with members of General Assembly. Uh, in that regard, what areas, and you gave quite a bit of background regarding affirmative litigation that you've been involved in as a member of the Law Department. Are there areas on the horizon that you see regarding affirmative litigation? And do you continue to have that type of perspective regarding affirmative litigation on behalf of the constituents and citizens of the City of Philadelphia?
Uh, thank you for your questions and also that insight, Councilman Green. I would definitely want to follow up with you and your office to identify those other municipalities, because I think definitely there is, um, there's more power in trying to change, make those significant changes in those numbers. Um, regarding your question as to my vision for affirmative litigation, I am definitely invested in that. Um, I think we are looking into, this past year, we filed a litigation, a complaint against jewel manufacturers out in California for their e-cigarettes. Um, we are contemplating, I don't want to go into too much detail because it's still privileged. And I think, you know, if you wanted to discuss more so in private or any other council member as to some different ideas to brainstorm, but other types of public health issues. So any ways that, you know, we can try to combat, further combat opioid usage or any type of, um, targeting in these different neighborhoods of color. I had the pleasure of working with Dr. Farley and with Councilman Jones in defending the flavored tobacco ordinance in federal court. Um, so right now, that case is on appeal. But I think it was that case that sort of made me realize more so that there are other ways that we can try to attack those, um, those targeted marketing. So I'd be more than happy to talk more about that with you offline and with others. Um, and the last one is environmental. I think as a city, as a country, we need to do things to make, to make changes in climate change. So I'm more than happy to explore that with you or any other council member that have ideas as to how to do that. Um, so that's one of the, one of the things I had in mind in when I mentioned environmental efforts. But we are very invested that the affirmative and special litigation group, um, part of their job is to, you know, to work with me and others in trying to think of, you know, these different ideas, these different types of public policy litigations. Uh, and we need as many ideas as possible that are, that will be valuable to the city. So I'd be more than happy to discuss that more so with you and again, with any other council member who's interested.
Well, thank you for your response. I appreciate your career and your work. I look forward to working with you going forward. Um, also, Council President, I have to leave to go to another matter. And so I'm leaving my vote as aye on all matters before this committee this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clapham.
Thank you, Council President. Um, good morning, Ms. Cortez.
Good morning.
Um, and you talked about, um, additional creative ways of addressing gun violence via affirmative litigation. Beyond the suit that you were just discussing with the Council President, are you able to expound on some of those ideas?
Um, I think right now, we're trying to think of them because right now, the, the lawsuit, the Crawford lawsuit is our latest, um, creative and innovative, uh, idea put into paper, put into, I think it's an 80-plus page complaint compiled with different data. Um, and it's a very novel legal theory as well. Um, so right now, that's where our focus is on. But like I said, we also have to think of additional ideas. So right now, we're, we're still in the thinking process. And like I had just mentioned to Councilmember Green, if you or your office would like to collaborate with us to try to think of other, um, other creative and innovative ideas, we'd welcome that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Um, in your testimony, you mentioned that you'll be adding a diversity, equity, and inclusion assessment to individual performance evaluations. Um, I'm very excited by that idea and wanted you to expand on the criteria and metrics, um, you'll be using on these D E I assessments.
Sure. Thank you for, um, that enthusiasm. We're excited about it as well. So I'll be working with our Director of Diversity and Inclusion and Professional Development, Nicole Seiright, um, who is a leader, a trailblazer, a subject matter expert in D E I. Um, so she had done something similar at her last place of employment in Cardozo. So I'm working with her to sort of identify, I think, we'll start off with different types of questions that will really gear towards these, that D E I as a core competency. Um, and then we'll take it from there. And then we'll start to also work with our department employees, um, in, in training them, right? And trying to guide them as to what these questions are, how they should assess individuals, because we want to make sure that it is, um, as best received on both ends in order to, to appropriately assess that metric.
Okay. What types of questions might we ask?
I don't know what these questions are yet, to be honest with you. Um, I think she is working with me. She, we haven't materialized them yet, but I think once we do, if you have an interest in have, in seeing some of those questions, I would be more than happy to, to share those with you.
Okay. Um, can you talk about the types of legal claims that cost the city the most money and how you plan to reduce the amount of money that the city pays out in claims?
Sure. That is a very complicated and challenging question. Or I think the most claims thus far, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but historically, most of the claims have been from the police department. I think recently in particular, it's been overturned convictions. They have taken a large percentage of our, uh, indemnities funds. So I think just recently, uh, Chester Holman, who had been incarcerated for 28 years, uh, we settled with him for, I think, 9.8 million, but that's, I think, over a few years. Um, I think we had also settled for a significant other millions of dollars with other, um, overturned conviction, uh, individuals. So that is a significant amount just right there. That is a large percentage of the indemnities fund. So one of the things that was started under Marcel was the after-action review process where our attorneys, after a significant case like this, in particular with civil rights, any case that is over, I believe, a hundred thousand, that has settled for over $100,000, our attorneys will, uh, will meet with each other and sort of do an assessment as to what went wrong, what can be done, what can be more, what can we do to prevent this in the future? What would be our proactive advice to the police department as to try, how to avoid this? Um, so we've been working with them on those, uh, on those issues. So I think that's one of the ways that we can try to, to minimize, uh, those lawsuits in the future.
Thank you. No more questions for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, and, uh, good morning, barely still, everybody. Um, congratulations, Ms. Cortez, on your, uh, position. Um, I, it's already been a pleasure to work with you. Um, can't say the same for everybody on your team, but, uh, you, yes, definitely a pleasure to work with. Um, I want to jump, uh, into, um, let's start with what you said in your comments. You talked about the disproportionate, uh, number of stops for, uh, people of color. Um, I, I would like you to elaborate a little bit on that and, and tell me what your vision is as it relates to how you plan to address that issue.
Sure. I think in the, just when I mentioned that, we were, I was focusing on right now, our team, one of our legal teams is working with the police department on the Bailey litigation, so the Bailey settlement. Um, that was an action brought several years ago. It's currently before Judge Padova. Um, it's the plaintiff's attorney, I think, is David Rudofsky, and also the ACLU is involved. Um, and essentially, we are evaluating all the different stops of the City of Philadelphia, and we have been doing that for a number of years. Um, and so one of the things that has been shown through that study is that there is a disproportionate number of stops of people of color um, in, you know, that cannot be explained for any other reason. I think our statistician expert. I think our statistician expert explained that it, it was, you know, it was because of, of, it was because of the, of their color that that would, that they were stopped. So based off of that, we are working with the police department in ensuring that there is appropriate training and, and the plaintiff's counsel and the ACLU have been involved in those discussions with us. And also in trying to make sure that that training is done to, with the commanders of the police department. And then that training is then, um, brought down to the, to the patrol officers. Uh, and I believe Councilmember Thomas that there is going to be a much more in-depth discussion about this. I think we have scheduled that with your office, um, for Friday, where, um, my first deputy Craig Straw, who has been involved in this case from the, I think, from its inception. So he can definitely provide a lot more details on that.
So yes, definitely. Thank you. I look forward to being a part of that conversation. Um, and you know, I hear you talk about training. Uh, most of us feel like training just doesn't work. That's not essentially, uh, going to be what, what we can do to change people's mindsets. I think that, um, and, and I've been on a number of calls, uh, with your team and other folks about this particular issue. And I think that, and I've said this multiple times, when you're talking about someone's instincts, right? Like it's their subconscious response, it's a knee-jerk reaction. And we can't train people to change their perception of a specific group of people. So I, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can move in a different direction as it relates to, uh, addressing the issue that you talked about, as it relates to a disproportionate number of people of color who've been stopped. Uh, clearly you know what my, um, recommendation is as it relates to addressing that issue, which actually brings me back to Council President's point, which he said he wouldn't be labor, but I'm going to go ahead and do it for him. Um, you, he, he talked about this potential of, 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 of there being a conflict. When there's a disagreement and you said that you'll cross that bridge when you get there. I felt like we crossed that bridge weeks ago. So, um, I'm curious to try to figure out, you know, and this wasn't prepared in my line of questions, so I apologize, but I'm trying to curi-, I, I'm curious to try to figure out, you know, why today we're saying that we're not in a difference as it relates to ideology when I've already had to seek outside counsel, uh, to be able to, uh, get my legislation introduced. And now that we're at the implement, implementation phase, um, there's clearly a difference in ideology between the council side and the solicitor's side. And I've had to go outside and seek outside counsel, bring those opinions to the solicitor's office, and still, um, consistently receive pushback and disrespect, honestly, um, because the conversations haven't always been one hundred percent professional. So I'm curious to know, you talked, uh, we talked about a conflicted council. At what phase do we get to the point where we actually, uh, go with, uh, some level of conflict that council will bring in a third-party mediation? And like Council President, why do we have to go do that? Why is it that, uh, we have to be the ones who have to seek outside counsel and get a third opinion, uh, when, uh, the, the administration or someone on that side, um, doesn't agree with this? I know I asked you a lot right there, um, but Council President, if you don't mind, can we do a deeper dive into some of this stuff?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I, you know, this is, I had that conversation with, uh, Ms. Cortez early and, and I had it with Suzie and I had it with, uh, Marcel. I just don't know how somebody in the mayor, in the cabinet, the mayor's cabinet can represent us equally. I mean, that right there tells you, so absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I had what I thought was a, a solution, but I was talked out of it. But I think we should follow up, definitely.
Okay, so are we, are we following up or did you want me to answer?
Uh, I mean, this is, this is, this is, I mean, from my perspective, it will require a real, like Suzie came up with, he thought was within the jurisdiction that he had, what I thought was a reasonable solution, and I think we got it fair shape. Um, on every time we had a conflict, he came up with a position that I think was reasonable and fair. And I actually felt that Suzie actually weighed more in the favor of the legislative branch more so than the executive branch. And I'm not saying that's the solution, but that's how it worked out. So it didn't, I didn't have as much of a challenge. But I'm just saying at some point, and the councilman just referenced the particular thing going on now.
Oh, yeah, we have a conflict.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a couple of other issues that, uh, had on a couple of calls with some advocates, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So at some point, we gotta really figure this out, you know? I know this, you're not even this official, uh, uh, city solicitor yet, but be prepared. I mean, it's going to have to be a real conversation and some kind of solution about you.
No, I, I will say that I've, I've been in it, like I said in my remarks, I've been in this role since December eleventh. Um, so in those two months, I don't know what predated, what types of conversations predated me. Um, but I, my commitment is to review any proposed legislation, review it for whether it is legally enforceable or valid. And I think what I remember communicating during, um, different conversations was that I'm willing to evaluate, you know, if somebody else is saying that this is legally valid, I'm, I'm willing to listen to it and have these different conversations. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Thomas, that I've, I come in at this late juncture that it sounds like you've sort of had these other conversations that predated me and sort of I have to play catch-up on this particular legislation and just the different history of it and the different perspectives and the lead, different legal arguments on it. So I'm more than happy to have, you know, these different conversations as to the legal perspectives, the legal interpretations of it. Um, and to my, to my knowledge, there hasn't been an official legal opinion, a written legal opinion on this as of yet. So in my mind, I think until that occurs, then there, I think after that occurs, then there is that, that conflict. And I think if there was a, if, you know, it wouldn't, I think if the legal opinion I had, you disagreed with, I think there is legal recourse that you, or if the city council wanted to take, they would be able to take it. They would have to go, you would have to go to court and, and basically declare that whatever legal interpretation I had was incorrect. But again, there has been no legal opinion issued. To my knowledge, my predecessor did not issue a legal opinion on this. Um, and I have not done that either.
So, uh, just, uh, but just for the record, Council President, um, and, you know, Ms. Cortez, you have my vote. I'm, I'm in full support of you being there. Uh, it's been a pleasure to work with you. But for the record, because I don't want to make it seem like I'm the big bad wolf, uh, you were definitely on a call that we had, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And the majority of the calls that has gone south, um, in collaboration with the Solicitor's Office has happened, um, in the year two thousand twenty-one. So these aren't issues, um, the conversation definitely started last summer. Uh, but we've been on calls with you, we've been on calls with majority folks this year. Uh, the majorities of these issues have happened, ha- have happened in two thousand twenty-one. And again, I just want to go on the record and say, like, we are in a stage of conflict. Like whatever, um, it is, I don't know how many more negative conversations we need to have. Um, I don't know, uh, how further south things will go. Um, but I, I, we, actually, as we've had the conversations, they've begun to get counterproductive. So, um, I definitely appreciate you talking about addressing the issue of disproportionate stops of people of color. But again, what Council President talked about as far as different ideology, we're literally at that point right now, and my team and I, we feel very, very stuck as it relates to that issue because we feel like we have legal precedent while we're being told by the Solicitor's Office that we don't, that we don't. So, um, I just want to make sure that that goes on the record today. Um, I'm also a, a hundred support, is a hundred percent in support of, of the work being done around Act one eleven. Um, uh, I am a member of the Police Reform Working Group. So, uh, like Councilmember Green, we've been talking to people across the Commonwealth. So if there's any support that you need there moving forward, you can reach out to our team in my office, and we're a hundred percent here. Um, as I close out, the last thing I want to say is as we think about and reimagine a lot of different things, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Gadias, as it relates to, um, a dollar spent, uh, by the city, um, specifically for lawsuits. Um, that, that again, ties back into the policing issue. So I really just don't want us to think that these institutional problems that, uh, have racism at its core can be fixed with training. We can't train people, um, out of, of the ideology that they have. Uh, thank you, Council President. I appreciate the time. And again, congratulations, uh, Ms. Cortez. I definitely look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Janice Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, um, Deanna Cortez. I'm gonna take a little personal privilege here because I want to remind my colleagues and thank them, um, the historic moment that we are living with, you know, as the first Latina in council, to have the first Latina as a city solicitor. And so I want to recognize you and all the work you've done to get here. Um, and just know that I'm, you know, this is one of those times where I'm proud. I'm proud of you and I'm proud of the way you're responding to our questions. And it just speaks to your character, your qualifications, and your willingness to understand that this is an evolving situation. Law is evolving. Um, and so I just personally want to say, uh, thank you, thank you for your service, and I really look forward, uh, to working with you. Um, and I know if anybody can fix this, it'll be a woman. So here we go. Um, so what, you know, I want to kind of drill down on some of the conversation, policy versus law. And I think what has happened, and you know, and I understand how my colleagues feel, in the past, we have had lawyers in the Law Department use their C to set policy. And I have a debate with them all the time. And I, you know, if, if, if you know, I've debated some of your staff, they will tell you. I told them, if you want to set policy, run for office. I need a lawyer to tell me how, how to get the job done. I don't need a lawyer to tell me no, that's not your role to comply. And so I think part of what you're seeing is this notion, and I think you have to set that tone, that the Law Department is there to serve all of us and to provide legal guidance, not to set policy. Um, that's where you see the conflict. And so when we reach out for legal advice, that's what we want. We want them to guide us to the how. Um, and so I really look to you to say to folks, that is our role to minimize some of these conflicts as we figure out what this relationship is going to be moving forward. One of the areas, and you know, I've said this to you before, you know, things go to the Law Department to, the contracts go there to get stalled. Everything is always around the Law Department. And I think unfairly sometimes, right? Because I think departments use that as an excuse. Can you speak to me what you've seen, um, if you have any initial reactions to the role, the important role that the Law Department's, um, plays in checking off and signing off? But how, what, what streamlining potential do you see there so that stuff doesn't go to the Law Department to die?
Now, thank you for your, for your kind remarks, uh, Councilmember Sanchez, and your question. Um, I think, you know, part of the tone set by my predecessors, and I think I will definitely continue and look to improve it, is to look for ways to, um, to streamline and to receive different feedback from you, your fellow council members and all of city, and all of our different city clients. Um, so there are definitely ways from your perspective that we can improve, that we can expedite it. But I think at the same time, we have to be mindful and careful that we don't want to expedite a process to the point that certain things are compromised or that certain corners are cut, um, because that, that is not a good outcome for the city at all. So I think, um, you know, the Law Department has been working to improve that. I believe that in the, um, the CAO had give, had given us different goals to meet, um, as to these different benchmarks, um, for that process to meet for the, for the contracting process, and that we have, we have met those goals. Um, so it may not seem like that from your end or from others' end, but we have met those goals and actually the whole process of contracting, it requires others as well besides the Law Department too. So in the full scale of days that it takes to, um, to fully conform the contract, the Law Department's, um, percentage of that is less than a third. So the entire days that it takes, the Law Department's time period is less than one-third of that. So all the other times, we're waiting for different feedback from folks, from different department agencies. Um, but that being said, I, I, like with everything else, we look, we're a client service. If we're legal, we're, we're lawyers, so we provide legal representation and that's part of client service. And so if there are ways that we can improve that, we are more than happy to, to hear that and, um, and listen. So we look forward to your hearing from.
Yeah, I think, for me, the re, the, yeah, thank you. For me, the reoccurring ones are the ones that are most concerning, right? It takes ninety days to execute a contract, right? And the ones that are reoccurring for the people are, you know, we call some of our community-based organizations stakeholders, and we know we're going to contract them with every, every year. You know, them waiting for December for a conforming contract is, is pretty challenging. And so I just want to see that process that end up in that procurement, because that's what limits minority participation, because if they're getting paid two hundred days, like there's a ripple effect to, to those timelines. So any dashboard, anything you can create to incentivize staff, um, would be greatly appreciated. And then just finally, uh, because I think it's important, and I know you're, you've entered these conversations as it relates to residents, you, you are the city solicitor representing the executive. You're the city solicitor representing council. How do you represent the people? And how do you ensure, right, we're having debate and discussion? How do you view that and what is the constitutional obligation to the residents? Um, as it relates specifically for policies that impact them, whether it's their civil rights violations, we stop them first, or I would say the entrapment that we have in Cusington? How do you see your role in that? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, and thank you for that. Um, a very interesting question, Councilmember Sanchez. Um, I view the city solicitor's role as it's still a lawyer, so providing legal advice to you, to the administration, to any city client that is looking to create legislation or to create policies to address those issues. So I think that is the primary role of the, of the Law Department. Um, I think, you know, we're more than happy to be a partner in, in discussing some of the other consequences. But at the end of the day, it is not the Law Department's role. I think as you pointed out and others have pointed out, it is not the Law Department's role to say what is good policy, what is bad policy? It is what is legally enforceable and what is legally valid. Um, and so we will, will be happy to be involved in any conversation, you know, that, because you're absolutely right, these laws do impact our residents, uh, and we need to be mindful of that. But at the end of the day, our role is to, to defend the city in these different lawsuits, on the one hand with civil rights, but also to the extent that we're trying to be, um, proactive and address all of these different issues that are arising in our city, um, viewing those ordinances and those regulations for, um, you know, whether they are legally valid and enforceable and can withstand any type of legal challenge if and when challenged by somebody else in court. So that's another key part in our legal analysis for these.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President, uh, Clark. And, um, I want to, uh, continue, um, Ms. Cortez, um, with the, um, the line, um, of, of questioning or direction that Councilwoman Sanchez, um, left off. Um, this is a pretty historic moment, your being the first Latina, um, uh, to become city solicitor in the city of Philadelphia. And, um, I just want to note, because I'm a student of history, uh, and for the record, that, um, on today, Sharice Lilly and Stephanie Franklin Suber, and I know I'm missing one, I think her name was Shelley. I think I had just made my transition or something to Harrisburg, um, when she came. But you stand on the shoulders of some, some, some women who helped to blaze the trail, that provided access to this opportunity. And I know, based on the historical overview that you gave about who you are, not simply the academic credentials of Cornell, which, which, to be quite frank, Catherine Gilmore Richardson just reminded us of today, being prepared is extremely important too, right? And, and, and your experience, you have that, but noting where you come from. You know, that, that, that Philadelphians now get an opportunity to see someone in that office who is a product of beginnings that many of them can identify with. You know, sort of Langston Hughes, life for me ain't been no crystal stair, right? They see you as an attorney, you're accomplished, but knowing where you come from is important. So I want to thank you so very much, uh, for saying that and thought it was worth my noting it, uh, uh, for the record. Also, right now, a little bit of appreciative inquiry for me, because, um, I know how tough I and heavy I lay on that Law Department. So let me just state this for the record. Louis Rossmann, Joe Rosenberg, Altman, um, uh, Robert Kiefer, Russell Crotz, Raynell Staley. Um, I apologize in front of the new solicitor that I know I have gotten on your nerves, calling you and emailing you on the weekend. Um, you've been here since December, Ms. Cortez, solicit, uh, soon-to-be Solicitor Cortez. And I have warned you out, I don't know how much, on the weekend with text messages and everything. So I hope you don't consider it an abuse of power, but when we're trying to work to get. So I hope you don't consider it an abuse of power, but when we're trying to work to get things done, we need you to help us give, uh, um, answers. Um, and you've done that. Um, I want to specifically state to the residents of the ninth district who are listening, as you heard Ms. Cortez lay out, um, you know, her history in this department. When she mentioned Vision Quest, I immediately thought about the residence of Logan, who when uh, the issue was first proposed by the owner of that property, um, they had never even talked to the residents there to, to, to ask them what they thought about it. Um, and, and the law department represented us well. Um, so I want to say thank you for them. Thank you for mentioning lost and stolen guns, which is near and dear to my heart. Foundation of advocacy, um, when I was a member of the General Assembly. Um, and the first vote that was ever taken on that issue on the floor of the House started when city councils own, Joe Grace was actually the executive director of a group called Ceasefire P A. Sherrell, why are you mentioning all of this on the record? So people could understand that this battle and this fight against these issues that we are working on right now, none of this is new. So thank you for continuing that legacy. Um, I want to say to Mr. Crawford, who I know well, thank you for your leadership on the ground from the grassroots level on this issue. And I look forward to seeing how we move forward in the court system, Ms. Cortez, uh, under, uh, your leadership. Uh, Hillary, uh, Emerson, in my office, my staff lawyer, uh, has said, you better thank her for that code enforcement support for closing those nuisance bars in Olney. Why am I getting this on the record? People think law department, but I want you to see how, um, your, I want them to see how your work impacts what happens in the neighborhood um, that they live in. Um, finally, I want to say, um, this to you. When we came up with that idea of developing the Dr. Walter P. Lowback's Truth, um, in Business Act Legislation, making it, um, you know, transparent who was doing business, how much they were getting paid, how long, you know, peeling back the layers of what the people who look like at those firms, um, you know, who they are, uh, and making it transparent, like putting it on a website. I had people, Ms. Cortez, who told me I was crazy, that the law department would never help us find a way um, to do it. Raynell and Louis, and I'm not talking about just my staff, because I was hands-on with this one from the beginning to the end. They worked with us to cross every T dot, every I, which are contracting, uh, lawyers along with the city's procurement, uh, department. So, um, I wanted to say a thank you, uh, uh, for that. Now, the next thing I want to say to you is that when you just mentioned the, the lawsuit and you mentioned Commonwealth Court, to all of the residents of the city of Philadelphia who were looking for a reason why we needed to continue paying attention to what happens during elections, you just heard Ms. Cortez talked about the power of a little-known court that we know very little about. I'm talking about the average, everyday citizen. But she mentioned the role that that court had in deciding how we as a city get the opportunity to respond to the challenges facing us. So those folks who are elected to Commonwealth are superior and supreme, that impacts us. So we need you, uh, to pay attention. Um, I also want to finally say this. I've got a couple of more issues that we are, uh, working on with your office and they're before you now and you know how complex they are. And some of them are intergovernmental, require federal, state, um, uh, and, and, and local, uh, uh, law, um, departments, um, and, and different entities, but I'm looking forward to getting a solution. Um, my hope is that you all will continue doing what you've been doing and working with us and that when I come, I don't want anybody telling me, no, you can't do that. I want them telling me this is what we're going to do to help you get as close as possible to your goal. And um, there are three issues. I don't want you to say them out loud. Don't mention them because I want to fix them first, okay? But I want to say we're looking forward, uh, to working with you and congratulations once again.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Parker. I look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I believe Councilwoman Gil.
Thank you very much, Council President, and, uh, good afternoon, uh, Solicitor Cortez. Um, so I also want to just say what an honor it is, um, you know, to have you here, uh, stewarding our city during these times. Um, I think we've had a chance to talk, uh, before. Um, and I'm really very hopeful and just as, you know, a woman who is making, um, you know, you know, just trailblazing in this area, it is really hopeful to see you here. So thank you. Um, the other thing, I think I wanted to start a little bit with a comment and then I had a couple of questions. Um, you know, one of the comments, and I think it was alluded to a little bit before, but, uh, there are spaces and we have certainly witnessed some of the challenges that the city has faced um, over the last, uh, just even over the last term. Um, it is hopeful that the city solicitor's office has an unparalleled track record around establishing our jurisdictional rights, uh, especially when there was a, you know, a presidential administration that tried to, you know, threaten or use its own ideology to, uh, you know, to curtail, uh, cities and municipalities, uh, rights to protect its own residents, um, rights to enforce local laws. So I want to, you know, congratulate you and also hope that we can continue that, that excellent track record. But there have also been real challenges that the city has faced. Um, and I, you know, I don't think it's a question. I think it's just, you know, uh, an ongoing area of work. Um, but there will be places where the law is the law, of course, but the law is also interpreted. And I think what some of my colleagues were saying earlier was about the need for you to be that moral voice in the room. Um, we know that there are circumstances that people face where the path is uncertain, where, um, it's not clear exactly what the law says, maybe some, some need to be written afterwards. Um, but there was no question that, uh, in many cases, I felt that, uh, your predecessor, a solicitor, that I felt like there was a moral voice in that room. And if there's one thing that I would say, um, on your day of confirmation is that I hope you will continue that path to be the moral conscience in the room. Um, and to consider the impact that, that your voice carries with not only all of us, but with, uh, the broader city and its need for civil rights protections and, uh, to recognize that, um, the law uh, lives in our actions and not just, as you know, on paper. Um, so, uh, you know, I had a couple of questions. One of them is that, um, Councilmember Gautier talked a little bit about the need for oversight on our settlements. And we recently passed a law that requires, um, you know, the city to come together quarterly uh, to review settlements, um, to, um, you know, in a very general way, uh, try to figure out paths for improvements. I know that COVID has had a difficult impact on it in twenty twenty, but would love to hear how you think this process works moving forward in twenty twenty-one.
And thank you, uh, Councilmember Gil. Just a little bit of clarification on the question, how the process of the meeting with your settlement.
Yep. So the law requests that the city gather a group of individuals to meet quarterly to review settlements, um, to talk about, uh, writ large, I mean, not specific to the settlements itself, but more broadly, what are there any patterns? Are there things that we can improve and what are the things that, you know, we're, we're talking about to ensure, uh, and identify any problem areas? Um, so that the city isn't paying out millions of dollars in settlement fees.
No, of course. Um, and I do remember that we had, did have that one meeting, I think, back in, it was a while ago, so we're behind on our quarterly meetings. So I think the first step would be for us to, to schedule that meeting. And I think then it would be, um, up to me, well, my team then to, you know, reflect on what has, what has been settled during that time and just answering those questions. And I think we just have to be more, um, proactive and I think diligent in making sure that we're scheduling these meetings and then preparing for that. Um, and just being able to better identify and assess. I think overall, the, um, the settlements have been lower, I think, because of the number of settlements have been lowered due to the pandemic. Um, so I think that is a, that is a good point in the sense of, you know, our indemnities fund. Um, but we, there are still areas that we need to improve upon, um, and there's definitely need for oversight. So, um, I look forward to working with you and, and your team on that.
I'll put, um, some other questions. I know that people have their time short, so I'll, I'll send other questions over. But I do think it's important for us to do some of that, uh, review. And I think, you know, we aren't just looking at larger settlements, we're looking at, uh, concentration of settlements within particular departments so that there's an ability to identify. But I know that some of that work, uh, should be ongoing. So I look forward to continuing those, uh, starting those up again. And in particular, having, um, as much analysis as possible ahead of the meeting, um, so that we can make the meeting as productive as possible. But thank you very much and, um, we look forward to the confirmation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, we have Councilwoman Bass now.
Councilwoman Bass. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, hold on. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So, uh, I want to start by, uh, giving, uh, you know, congratulations in advance uh, to our new Madam Solicitor. Um, I know that you are highly qualified, uh, ready to go on day one. And so, uh, I think that your position, uh, you know, as a leader, as a leader within the Latino community, as a leader here in the city of Philadelphia and legal communities, I think that this is going to serve us all well. And we're certainly a city in, in need of, uh, significant leadership and direction right now. And I think that, uh, you, you're going to do a great job. So I just really wanted to, uh, say that first and foremost. Uh, secondly, I also wanted to, uh, thank you for acknowledging the work that you had done around discrimination, uh, within the LGBT communi- uh, community by vendors or, um, uh, contractors that we had worked, that the city of Philadelphia was working with when it came time to, uh, place children into foster care. So there were a number of agencies that were called on the carpet for discriminating against, uh, folks, uh, within the LGBT community and that they would not place uh, young people within those homes. And so my office called it out. Uh, we, uh, sponsored a resolution to call for hearings. And I remember, I can only tell you how we got, uh, so many calls and contacts from a number of folks in city government who did not want us to go through with that resolution. Um, you know, they did not want us to, to try to, uh, uh, make waves, if you will. And, uh, I'm just glad that we did. I'm glad that, uh, you know, we're having this conversation on a national level now. And I'm just glad to have played a role in it. And I thank you for your work and your advocacy, because this is just something that's way too important uh, to be overlooked or to be, uh, swept under a rug. So, uh, thank you so much for all of your work and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bass.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, I think she may had to, I think she had to leave, but she wants to be recorded as voting on all bills and all resolutions, rather. Uh, let the record reflect that. Um, any other questions for this witness? There being none. Mr. Christmas.
Yes, our next witness.
I want to thank you so much. Uh, get out of here while you can. Uh, thank you. Look forward to this.
Council President, Count, Mr. Council President. It's Councilman O'Neill. I just wanted to make sure, if I go offline, I've been listening to the whole. I, I just want to, uh, give my whole heart and port, uh, to, uh, our acting city solicitor and, uh, can't wait to see her confirmed. We had a great, we had a great meeting and I think she's the right person for the, for the job at this time and, uh, we'll succeed, uh, with flying colors.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Neill.
All right. Uh, Madam Solicitor, I think you should probably get out of here while you still can.
Okay. We can talk twice. Thank you. Bye.
Appreciate your testimony. Thank you. Talk to you soon. Um, Mr. Christmas.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Can we, uh, call our next panel of witnesses? We have our school district.
Yes, sir.
Next.
Uh, we call Ms. Cecilia Thompson, Ms. Lisa Sally, and Mr. Reginald Streeter. All nominees to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. And also, uh, Mr. Otis Hackney, Chief of the City's Chief Education Office.
Thank you. Are you, are you all connected?
Yes. Yes. Yes, it was Lisa Sally was the first yes.
And we need, uh, need to hear a male, male name. Mr. Streeter. And Mr. Hackney, you got one also?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, uh, uh, Council President and members of city council.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, I'm going to ask you all first, guys, can, um, when you're not speaking, unmute yourself in the low background. I don't know about some of our side of the doors. Um, so, um, you want to call my first, first witnesses to testify? You guys just, just, uh, state your name for the record. Proceed with your.
Uh, Cecilia, you want to read your testimony? Cecilia Thompson, you can read your testimony.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure to proceed. Thank you very much. Um, and I'm not sure why my camera's not working. Um, it's charged it to my hardware, um, but I'll read my testimony.
Please proceed.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of city council. Um, my name is Cecilia Thompson and I am one of the mayor's nominees to the Board of Education for the School District, School District of Philadelphia. As a proud graduate of the Philadelphia High School for Girls, my introduction to advocacy with the School District of Philadelphia began with my now twenty-two-year-old June twenty-twenty graduate, Trevor, entering the district from early intervention, um, who lives with severe autism. As a single parent, I learned how to navigate many systems, including community behavioral health and the School District of Philadelphia's array of specialized services. My passion for education and strong desire to see all students living with disabilities succeed in the classroom led to my involvement with various special education, educational and disability organizations. As a result of my volunteerism, I've been selected to sit on many boards and to serve in leadership positions in the city. Currently, I am the Chairperson of the Philadelphia Right to Education Local Task Force for Intermediate Unit Twenty-Six. As Philadelphia is a district and an intermediate unit in Pennsylvania and an appointed panel member and voted secretary for the Governor's Special Education Advisory Panel, or C. The Philadelphia Right to Education Local Task Force has a longstanding partnership with the district through their Office of Specialized Services, or O S S, which provides information or supports for students living with disabilities and an avenue for families to communicate their concerns directly with the Deputy Chief of O S S and their staff on issues pertaining to their children. While C consists of governor-appointed members from across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania whose mission is to provide advice and feedback to the Pennsylvania Department of Education Bureau of Special Education staff on various initiatives, interventions, strategies and other topics related to students living with disabilities to improve the education of students living with all disabilities. Additionally, I was selected as one of the first individuals selected from over two hundred applicant applicants to serve on the Board of Education's Parents and Community Advisory Council, whose charges provide an input and got. whose charges provide an input and guidance on the interests and concerns of Philadelphia public school families, caregivers, and community members, while serving as a vital link of community engagement with the Board of Education and the School District of Philadelphia and school communities. In January 2021, I resigned from this position to continue moving forward with the mayor's nomination to serve on the Board of Education. Currently, I'm pursuing a master's in special education to learn what is expected of special educators, so I have the tools to further assist families of students living with disabilities who are receiving special education supports and services. Additionally, I serve as a peer parent with the PA Bureau of Special Education, CICOP, monitoring team, and a parent member of the Philadelphia Coalition of Special Education Advocates. Moreover, I'm a founding board member for Philadelphia Family Voices. And last fall, Mayor James F. Kennedy appointed me as a Commissioner to the Mass Commission on People with Disabilities and was recently selected in January twenty-one to serve on the Philly Autism Project Advisory Board, a group near and dear to my heart as I'm a single parent of a twenty-two-year-old young man living with severe autism. Furthermore, I'm also active in the promise zone where I reside, participating in two communities, two committees, which are Health and Wellness and the Workforce and Economic Opportunity Committee, providing information from the perspective of a low-income resident to better my community, which is primarily low-income residents. With all I do to advocate for my son and his needs, I continue to volunteer and advocate for all children with or without disabilities because I believe all families should have the information needed to advocate for the support, services, and activities leading towards academic success and becoming an overall contributor to society and having the skills to complete, to compete in this global society. As a lifelong advocate of public education with experience serving at the state and local levels, I offer unique skills and experiences. I have been involved with the Board of Education, the School Reform Commission, and now the New Board of Education for over fifteen years. I provided testimony regarding special education and other initiatives related to children and families. I've taken everything I've learned and this information and provided it to families so that they are informed and can advocate for their school communities. I've been a constant advocate for special education over fifteen years to ensure students with disabilities and their families are included in all decisions at the school district. I also advocate for families living in low neighborhoods because I am a family in one of those many low-income neighborhoods. So I have the same struggles as my neighbors. Becoming a servant to improve the educational, recreational, and other supports to students, becoming a holistic citizen is a mission I would be humbled to endeavor. I am humbled and grateful in being selected by Mayor James F. Kennedy to serve the children of our public and charter schools and appreciate the opportunity to participate in this city council hearing and, if confirmed, am eager to begin service to the children as a member of the Board of Education for the School District of Philadelphia. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We're going to just go through the testimony, then we'll ask questions. Next up, Lisa Sally, and then we'll be followed by Reginald Streeter.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay?
Um, okay, little muffled.
Okay, I'll try to speak up. I'll use my outside voice.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Let me just start by saying that I'm humbled and thankful for the mayor's vote of confidence and also very humbled and thankful to present to the city council this afternoon. I'm going to read through my written testimony first. So, good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Lisa Sally, and I identify as a proud product of the Philadelphia School District. I am an alum of the Philadelphia High School for Girls, and I completed junior high at mastermen. And I also completed graduate and undergraduate studies in engineering, completing a BS in Metallurgical Engineering and Material Science from Carnegie Mellon University and an MS in Decision Sciences and Engineering Systems from Menciller Polytechnic Institute. I have over twenty-five years' experience working in corporate America, leading operations in energy and industrials, specialty chemicals, and emerging technologies. These assignments included senior executive or officer-level positions at General Electric, GE, Dow Chemical, Underwriters Laboratories, and the American Petroleum Institute. I began my career as a materials nuclear engineer, served as Chief Strategy and Growth Officer, and served multiple times as Senior Vice President of a global manufacturing-based business. I have led organizations ranging in size from three to over five thousand persons, developing talent, building and strengthening stakeholder relationships, evolving culture, and generating financial improvement over thirty percent in billion-dollar markets. My career focus has been business strategy, innovation, product safety, and emerging technologies, and I am typically engaged as a change agent. Additionally, I have sat on numerous panels across the world to discuss technical topics as well as women in STEM and diversity conversations. I have collaborated with federal entities and international governments on the topics of strategic growth, partnerships, innovation, standards, and public safety. For example, last year, I was one of three judges selected by the Department of Energy to judge the 2020 Solar Competition Prize. I also previously participated in the Department of Commerce 2015 Energy Trade Mission to Africa and served as a White House Roundtable expert evaluating whether to continue tax credits associated with solar energy. Although my career has literally taken me all over the world, I have never lost sight of my community or my desire to create paths that help sustain future generations. For this reason, I have shared my expertise by teaching growth and risk assessment part-time at Babson College and the Goldman Sachs Ten Thousand Small Business Course for the past eight years. I've also judged business planning competitions at Temple University. I've served as guest lecturer in the Business School at Carnegie Mellon University, and I've testified before the Pennsylvania Legislature to request support for Alzheimer's research and services. I also serve our local community as a Silver Star, member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and a member of Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church. As I, as I hear local or statewide news on the condition of the Philadelphia School District, I am often saddened. I often wonder what happened to the district that prepared me to compete on a global basis. It was a district that worked well and served all abilities and all socioeconomic levels. Generally, as an engineer, I have been trained to solve legacy problems and to shape emerging technological challenges. As an executive, I also count it part of my responsibility to train future generations. The essence of this mindset is what I would hope to bring to a Philadelphia school district through the Board of Education. I would like to transition my concerns for the state of the Philadelphia School District to be in part of the strategy and solutions that continue to equip our youth to be global citizens who see the world as their playground in a district that, again, works for all abilities and all socioeconomic. My hope is that every Philadelphia child and family has access to quality education that allows them to make dreams realities. Thank you, Miss. Thank you for your time and attention this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Streeter?
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Reginald Streeter. I come to you today to express my deep and sincere interest in serving as one of the members of the Philadelphia Board of Education. I know that I have the passion and life experience necessary to be an excellent board member. I am number one, a proud, a product of the Philadelphia public school system. Number two, a parent to two children who currently attend a Philadelphia public school. Number three, an attorney. Number four, an active member of, to various nonprofit executive boards and other community-based organizations. And number five, a proud black man. In sum, I am intentional in staying connected to my community, and it has further empowered me to be an effective advocate for them in all the spaces that I serve. I am a product of Philadelphia, I am a product of the Philadelphia public school system. I graduated from the neighborhood schools of Leeds Middle School in nineteen ninety-seven and now the Shutter Germantown High School in two thousand and one. Going to and successfully matriculating through public schools gave me invaluable insight as to the multivariate positions impact that public schools can have on someone such as myself. I am from the northwest portion of the city and have spent most of my formative years in Mount Airy and then in Germantown. Going to Leeds and Germantown High gave me access to an education and social atmosphere that became the springboard as to who I am today. Moreover, these schools were cultural and historical hubs of intangible information that related not just to the greater community, but to discrete communities they served. Just as many students in the district, I had my difficulties in high school. I was not focused on school, but on the many distractions that sadly many students in Philadelphia must overcome to be successful in school. These distractions include economic inequality, economic apartheid, vis a vis their suburban counterparts, food deserts, lack of funding, and, and a lack of funding are all substantial barriers to learning. However, I, I had, however, I had an interaction with a teacher at Germantown High School. I can remember her name today, Mrs. Altman, who challenged me to overcome these barriers and be better. And I can honestly say that her words of tough love helped propel me to eventually complete my bachelor's and doctorate degrees. Based on my personal experience in Philadelphia public schools, it was a no-brainer when the mother of my children and I decided to send our children to CW Henry Public School. I have witnessed firsthand the logistical issues that beset the children, parents, the faculty, and administration of the school, of the school before and during the pandemic. All in all, I am passionate about children in Philadelphia having access to, to, to quality education regardless of the school, of the zip code they live in, or their race, gender, or other forms of status. In my current role as an attorney at a law firm, I am, I am charged with reading, reviewing, and synthesizing arguments for the purpose of motion practice or in preparation for oral arguments to the court. I also am published in an, in an international law journal and political and civil rights journal, matters that relate to critical race theory. In short, I excel at reading disinformation and presenting said disinformation to others in a way that is readily accessible. Finally, my commitment to the Philadelphia community is made evident by my nonprofit board and other organizational commitments and activities. As the Vice President of the Greater Philadelphia ACLU Executive Board, I have spearheaded an effort to make the ACLU more accessible to the black community by planning and executing program and outreach in the Germantown section of Philadelphia. As an executive board member to the Barristers Associates of Philadelphia, I have personally engaged in helping members of the community in expunging their records. Also, as a barrister, I have volunteered to teach other lawyers about voting laws and rules in Philadelphia in preparation for voter protection efforts in the 2020 federal and state elections. Finally, I also volunteer as a mentor and to distribute and other, to distribute food and other necessities to need Philadelphia as a proud brother and member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. At bottom, I perceive my role as being an advocate to and for the community and executing my fiduciary duty as a board member. I will be honored to serve the Philadelphia community as a board member. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for your testimony. Appreciate you. Appreciate the fact that you have shown an interest in the serving, the public service, particularly since you're not getting paid. So that really tells me that you're, you're really, 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 really interested in doing the best that you can for the city of Philadelphia. But this is a challenge. We need good people, and I've just heard your testimony. And you guys have a wide range of skill sets and wide range of interests, and that's really good for this particular time. I just want to say that your commitment is genuinely appreciated. And, you know, we're, we're going to be partners in all of this. I mean, we've got a long ways to go to get our children out of the challenges that they face now more than ever. Hopefully, at some point in the near future, we get back, kids back in the schools so they can socialize because that aspect is almost as important as the books, the, the book learning, being able to interact. As a grandfather, I know all about that. So the reality is, we appreciate what you've done and look forward to working with you. And please feel free, you know, my assumption is that you guys will obviously be nominated and, and approved and confirmed by council. But please feel free to interact with us and don't just think that you can only do it during the course of a budget hearing or some other official, formal setting. If you have some ideas and you have some perspectives, I want you all to feel, please feel free to reach out to members of council because we're in this together. It's going to take all of us to get us to a better path. So thank you. With that, I want to recognize Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to start by saying, you know, thank you guys, as Council President said, for taking on this huge volunteer task that is before you. So I have a few questions, but my first question is for Ms. Sally. As I listened to your testimony, I didn't hear you talk about local and neighborhood and community volunteering. And so I would like to hear more about that. I applaud your, your global perspective and the work you've done around. But I would like to hear more about what it has done specifically for your and surrounding neighborhoods.
Sure. So I grew up, and I didn't say this earlier, I grew up in West Oakland. And so I'm from West Oakland. I live in Mount Airy now. And I have, I actually graduated from girls high at sixteen years old. And I've been working literally in corporate from that time on where I really see this as a next chapter of my life and where I have more time to volunteer and give back to my local community. Thus far in the community, I've worked with the Mount Airy USA. I've served previously when they had a board that worked with local businesses. Because local business, big business is one thing, but big business doesn't even work without small business. I've always had a passion for small business in the local neighborhood and taken the skills that I've learned in big businesses actually to help small business run well. So I've done it through Mount Airy USA a number of years ago. I've also served on the board for CARRY, which is an aging organization in Philadelphia. I've done, I've been a member, and a lot of the volunteer work that I've done over the years has come through Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church, where I volunteered there in the financial literacy ministry previously, and also done work on, say, the strategy and the vision of the church as well. And I've done work through the local chapters of Alpha Kappa Alpha. Also, I teach at Community College to support small businesses in the Goldman Sachs program. And I've taught for the last eight years. I've taught since the inception. I'm one of the original people when the program was still started up in Philadelphia. So the reason I started by answering your question was I've kind of been working all my life, and the corporate career literally took me around the world. So when I was in Philadelphia, I tended to volunteer through more organized activities. And my commitment is really transition in the last ten years to do more hands-on within the community. Also, in West Oakland, and Ms. Parker, Mr. Earl Parker is aware of this, I led the community voice around St. Anthony's, which is where I went to grade school. They transitioned their convent to a dormitory for homeless students. And so I led and worked hands-on with the local priest in the St. Anthony's community to open that dormitory in twenty twenty. And during, as I've been able to be reflective during the years of the pandemic, I also just want to continue to give back to the community that, that made me essentially. And Philadelphia is a huge part of that. I hope that answers your question. Does it?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much. My next question is for all of you. Like, what do you view as your main responsibility on the school board? And how do you define success in the school district of Philadelphia? Any one of you guys can, well, I'd like all of you guys to answer that question.
I can take a stab at that. So to me, I think the attorney in me thinks about big picture and also incremental, the incremental picture. So I think that for me, success is, you know, incremental steps that are leading to a goal or a, or hard goals of which that our children are being educated in a way in which they are most qualified, not qualified, most prepared to navigate the world, Philadelphia, their lives. uh, Philadelphia, their lives, um, e- educationally, economically, and spiritually to the point where they can, where where our school district can can help implement those things in them. Um, in addition to that, um, I will say that I think for me, from like an attorney perspective as relates to family law, there's this thing called the best, the best interest of the child standard. So my 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 goal is to always think about what is in the best interest of our children. Obviously, I understand that there are other stakeholders and they are also top of mind as well as it relates to parents, as relates to teachers. I mean, currently, as you all know, that we are in pandemic and there's the issues of reopening and things of that nature. Um, so I think that for me, that the goal is always what is in the best interest of the children in the in the in the way that is the safest and best way for their families and other stakeholders.
Thank you. Cecilia or Ms. Sally?
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, go ahead. Okay. Yeah, all right, I'll go, sorry. Um, I I think one of the things I I bring is a a keen ability to listen and to make sure that all stakeholders' voice is important. I concur and agree one hundred percent with everything that Reggie said first. So not only building on that, but are we listening um to the stakeholders' voice? Not just having conversations or throwing rocks at each other or a lot of emotional conversation, making sure that we can convert the conversations or the voices to data that help us create the requirements for solutions that we ultimately agree and have the community backing to implement and all of those solutions to implement things that help our students to be best, the best productive citizens um that they need for themselves and their families and the world at large. I also think that using the data um of stakeholders, the data of their voice in particular, is helpful in making sure that not only the sto- the schools run well, but that the schools are safe and that the schools create a preparedness for all students irrespective of the immediate support that they might have at home. And so I think just coming from a corporate and a business background um and trying to make sure that as one person, not just my opinion, but understanding the total voice of the community and also not losing sight of the number one aim of educating our children um is a skill set that I can bring. It's Thompson.
Okay, um, I be- I believe that, nah, I believe, I know that the n- number one responsibility is is fiduciary, but but other than that, um, I am a firm believer in equity of education um for all of our children. It it shouldn't matter what zip codes you live in. Um, if you're able to read in one nine one oh four, you should be able to read in the overbook section of um West Philadelphia. Or you should be able to read um with, with the same um vigor and have the same resources as other um zip codes that tend to have um higher resources. Um, I also believe that um our role on the board um is to develop policies which um benefit the acad- which protect our children um and also make sure that our children have the academic resources that they need to be, as I stated um in my testimony, um to be able to compete globally um as well as to um, you know, maintain um their neighborhoods locally. We don't always have to leave our neighborhoods. Um, and that's one thing that I'm very firm um about. Our children need to see um what success looks like. Success does not always have to be moving out. Success can be staying here and making a stand on um certain things going on in our neighborhood and be- being able to give back and volunteer and participate um in our neighborhoods. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much. I have a second round of questions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you. I I also wanna um thank you, as the Council President Clark and Councilwoman Brooks stated, this is a volunteer job. Um, sometimes it'll appear a thankless job, but um I, it is not lost on me that we have three highly qualified African-American folks in consideration for the school board. I've been in council thirteen years. I don't know when. We always get this diversities, you know, I'm celebrating Diana Cortez. So I just, you know, wanna acknowledge that there are highly qualified people ready to serve. Um, and I thank the the mayor's um nomination committee and and the folks who who have volunteered throughout this process to get us to this point. I had a a couple of questions. Councilmember Brooks a- uh asked one of them around your role in the board. These are really fast questions, more for the record. We're gonna spend a lot of time as Chair of Education. I look forward to working with you. So, you know, a lot of people fall for local control. Real quickly, what is, you know, all of the three of you can answer, what does local controls mean to you? How do you, how are you gonna talk about local control and what it means? Um, given the history um and the mistrust that exists um between uh some of our stakeholders, what role do you see you playing as the fiduciary policy board, city council, and the mayor for us together to work towards building trust of all of the community uh stakeholders in the education field? And I'll leave it at those two and and again, thank you for your willingness to serve. So, local control, what does it mean to you? What do you see us doing together to win public trust?
Um, this is Cecilia Thompson. Um, building local trust is just being transparent. Um, I'm always for that. I'm just letting uh families know what they need to know, what we're doing, because I believe that um sometimes it is unclear as to what the board of that is doing because certain matters uh um for legality reasons have to be confidential. But it, as long as families and communities know what we're doing, uh minus things that um pertain to personnel issues, I believe that's how we build local trust. One is having um more community engagement other than the 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 action meeting that's held um on on a mo- mostly basis. And I bel- I know that it was announced at a recent meeting that moving forward, um, instead of having that one and done, um, community engagement that um, community engagements will be in the neighborhoods so that you can get uh different perspectives, because we are a city of neighborhoods and every neighborhood um has has their own unique um footprint. And they need to be heard concerning the children and in their schools. Um, do you want me to do local control as well? Okay, great. Um, local control for me um means having the city, having people from the city selected um by the city to uh, you know, represent the city. Um, I didn't have a problem with the process, um, and I thought the, while while it was rigorous, um, I believe it was necessary because, um, as it was stated earlier, um, you don't get any money for this. This is strictly volunteer. Um, if you really want to do this, you 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 have to be invested in this city and not um, and and not invested in the city and more importantly, invested in the education of our children. So again, local control for me is being from the city, having lived in the city for a number of years and being passionate about the children and going through this process. Um, yeah, that's what it means to me. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, now I'll try to answer in in this way. As I think about local control, I think about two things that are key to ensuring that local c- um control can kind of be the output. And the first one is what I talked about earlier is listening, right? And and not just talking at each other or not just going on the record or just a lot of emotional discussions without resolve in general. So some kind of way finding the ability to sit and work through the issues and to actually have a dialogue about it versus just presenting information. I think the second thing is a part of this um would also be important to think about not so much no. So when we are considering recommendations or specific things to implement for the school district that we think about how more so than no. And what I would refer and reference us to is if we think back to nine eleven, nine eleven, like the pandemic, ended up teaching us new normals. And with new normals, there were things that we didn't know how to do. We were gonna have to do more things locally also. Um, but over time, we we learned and figured out the how. So I think with the school district, the current state of the school district, the things that we have to address even post-pandemic and to get us the rest of the way through the pandemic, we have to learn to focus on the, uh, instead of a quick no, working together collaboratively and focused on the how. And just even adopting, we're gonna figure out the how versus the rejection, I think is a key part. Um, I also see Philadelphia, Philadelphia is one of my first loves. Um, it is very neighborhood-centric. Um, I I have lived a good chunk of my life on Germantown Avenue just from being from the northwest. And I think even with all the changes in the city of Philadelphia, that local control says taking that passion that we know from our neighborhoods and converting it to the passion of how we run our schools and involving all of the stakeholders, the students, um, the administrators, the teachers themselves. And then the last thing I'll say is that I think we have to keep in mind um to keep us on track with local control, we can compare being a teacher or an educator like being a a preacher or clergy of some sort. And in particular, as you're involved with people's souls, right? The classroom in itself is a very sacred place and it's a place that we have to restore. And in order to ensure, or what we want to restore is that learning can happen, does happen, and is repeatable in the classroom. But I think the local control required to do that begins with listening and begins with being focused on how, how we drive the solutions together and how we work collaboratively to ensure they're implemented neighborhood by neighborhood.
Yes, I agree with everything that my colleagues have just said. I think I want to answer the uh trust question first. Um, so at the outset, I just wanna, you know, mention that I'm very Afrocentric, very village-oriented. So uh my leadership style, um, my collaboration style is based upon that model or that iteration of that model. Um, so as far as trust goes, um, I I I tend to uh use a quote over and over again. And I'm sure that many are going to get tired of hearing this quote, but it's, I think it's an amazing quote. It's by John and B T. I am because we are, because we are, therefore I am. And I think if 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 I, for myself, that is how I purp- purp- pretend to uh to to build trust. And with that being said, what that means to me is supporting and elevating others' agency or other other individuals who want to support their agency. Uh, I think that uh many, many individuals may believe that they're not being heard or that they don't have the outlet to be heard. So I think that that, I I think just knowing that you're heard um can help you believe that, help you believe, help you get, help you feel that you are, help you get the the feeling of trust. Um, in addition to that, open communication and honest communication. Um, you know, obviously, there's i- issues of confidentiality, attorney-client privilege, I mean, all those things. Um, try not to bore everybody with the lawyer stuff today. Uh, but I think that try, finding ways to have open dialogue, open communication in layman's terms to taking something that's complex and 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 packaging it in a way that is still honest, but is easy accessible by the public is helpful. As my colleague Lisa said, we have, we're a city of neighborhoods, but we're also a city of 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 neighborhoods and zip codes that have varying levels of education and um and access to certain things. So I think that again, we have to think about equity, even how we communicate. Um, number, number three, I think that we should also a- affirm people. I mean, take the time to to affirm people, you know. Uh, you know, when someone says something or some, or 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 has a great idea or even if they're just speaking for, from the, from their worldview or their perspective, I think it's important to affirm people's humanity. Uh, so that we can always come back and remember, hey, we're all on the same side here, even though there are many, many stakeholders that are involved. And then number four, I think, uh, getting results. So obviously, all the things I said uh are 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 should should be, should be happening, but it's really about getting the results or at least showing that we're having incremental uh results. I'm a big proponent of the belief that, you know, an ounce of prevention is a pound of cure. But there were, there, in the past, sad to say, due to things like uh white flight, um, or or our economic apar- apartheid, uh, we we, the school district has fell in, fell into disrepair. Um, so understanding that there 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 are huge issues that need to be tackled and we have COVID, understanding a way to communicate, but also communicating those things are issues with that, you know, this incremental change is leading us to the right way to where we need to get to. And I think that my question, my answer for trust kind of leads to local control. Again, I think that many of the same things I said can also uh support um and also maintain and perfect local control, right? Uh, I'm a big proponent of having local control. Uh, and being Afrocentric is belief that the the best people who know how to rule themselves are the people who typically are ruled by others far away. So I think that, you know, as Philadelphians, um, from very, various different uh neighborhoods and things of that nature, uh, we can, if we come together as a village, uh, invite third-party stakeholders such as my, such as, for example, my fraternity, for example, does a mentorship. I've mentored a few times at MLTEP, a charter school right here in Germantown, things like that. We can, we can, we can have lo- local control outside of the uh purview of the uh institutional uh spaces, but also in the greater village space. Hope that, hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Councilwoman Garcia, I don't think she got back yet. Um, so the Councilwoman, Jim?
Thank you very much, Council President. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I, you know, certainly welcome you to the confirmation hearing and to my uh colleague, uh Cecilia Thompson, um, having started Parents United Together with you fifteen years ago now. Um, it's a great journey to see us where we are and uh, you know, doing exactly the work that we wanted to do as parents in the school district, and I know you'll be bringing that voice there. Um, I want to move relatively quickly because I know that there's a lot of time and I will certainly look forward to meeting with uh uh, you know, with all three of you individually, um, in particular, and also Reginald, thank you so much for your work at ACLU, particularly uh in the space on uh, you know, juvenile justice issues and um militarization. Um, those are areas that we are uh very active and engaged in and, you know, even beyond your school district role, I think it'll be great just to have you as a, a, you know, wonderful thought partner in that area. Um, my first question is if you could very quickly, um, and recognizing that this is a longer question, but I'm interested in where you see as your top priority of need um for action within the school district of Philadelphia. And I know there's a lot, um, but I would like, I I'm interested in your top priority of need and the role you think you could play to advance it. So I'll start with uh, with uh Mr. S- Streeter and then uh Ms. Sally and then uh Ms. Thompson.
Well, I mean, I I have other roles, so I don't want it to be misconstrued that this is all I'm thinking about.
Yes.
But uh, right, right now, we have COVID, right? And and the thing that I worry about, so I I've been blessed, so right now, my, actually, my daughter's here. She actually just got finished gym class here. Um, but I've been blessed to have a job where I can work remotely and and have a a co-parent who who's very active as well and making sure that our child doesn't fall behind. Um, and I'm al- and I'm blessed to be in a, in in a, in a cool environment where there is a community where uh, you know, parents are very active, um, and if, and things of that nature. Not active in a way that, um, because I don't want to disparage other parents at other schools who may be active in different ways, but active with the PTA, things like that in more institu- in a more institutional way. I worry about a a huge percentage of our children falling behind. Um, where uh, where next year, when they, with, hopefully next year, or near in their future, when everybody's back in school, um, I I worry that we may have a such a, a um disparate impact on certain area codes, certain zip codes, that that the gap between certain neighborhoods gets even bigger as far as reading, reading, math, and things of that nature. Um, so I worry about internet access. I worry about if there's, I worry about, is there, are there any ways that we can give people the help that they need? Again, I know that I'm one of nine. I know that the school board can do but so much. But even as a private citizen, I mean, I'm try, I I'm willing to use my my resources, my network to to think uh or to help get third parties like my fraternity or other fraternities, or the D nine, definitely shouting y'all out today, um, to to help us, to help us with people, our babies. Because at the end of the day, um, the last thing I would want is, it seems like economically, some people are doing very well, but then our children are left behind. So that's why I want to go.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Sally?
Sure. Um, I actually have a a similar concern for the children. Um, probably about, uh, what I, I'll just say a few years back, because I don't remember the exact year. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the annual luncheon at Girls High, so I'm a member, a lifetime member of the Girls High Alumni Alumni Association. And there was a report given on the state And there was a report given on the state of the school district at that time. And the person that gave the report said it like this, and this, this arrested me at that time and has haunted me since then. But what she shared was that 50% of the ninth grade repeats the ninth grade. And that was the, and, and the statistic bothered me second. What bothered me first was our inability to call failure, failure. And so when I talk about data in some kind of way, being able to put the data together to understand the state and the condition of the school, I think is very important. But from that day on, I kind of purpose within myself that I wanted to have a re- of, of, of voice and that I actually have a civic responsibility to help the same district that gave me a quality education that allowed me to do the things that, um, I've seen and done in the world. So probably more than five years ago, the seed was planted from hearing that report of the Philadelphia School District.
And how can you see yourself giving that wrong? I, I just want to be quick because I only have a few minutes and I do want to get everybody through. And I actually have a number of other questions. So if you could just, um, you know, just let me know, and we're going to have a longer conversation.
Okay, okay.
Um, so, you know, I just want to kind of have a little bit on the record, what your top area priority is.
Yes.
Um, and how you see yourself in your capacity as a school board member, moving that issue forward.
Yeah. So how I see myself is to really be data intensive to help with the government, governance and execution of the school. That's one, um, because we are a governance body. Two, I can't answer more specifically at this time because we haven't been fully briefed yet. And so I would expect to come back to you in the subsequent conversations to identify, say, my top priority and not only identify it, expect you and the other council mental members and all of the school district to hold me accountable to those priorities as well. Does that answer your question?
Um, we should keep talking. Um, Ms. Thompson?
Okay.
Yes. Um, thank you, um, Councilmember Jim. Um, one priority that's near and dear to me, obviously, is, um, the, 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 the lack of education for those students living with complex needs. Some of them ha- have not been educated since March 2020 due to their inability to work in this remote, um, environment for a variety of reasons. And secondly, meaningful, um, family engagement among, um, low-income families and those where English is, is, is not their first, um, language. Um, my role, I believe, is just going into those communities and it, and, um, just having those conversations with the proper, um, with the, with the trans, with the proper translations. And even those in the deaf and hearing impaired communities, um, no- nobody ever asked their opinion. So I want meaningful communicate, me- meaningful engagement from those stakeholders to inform, um, what we're doing, um, at the school district.
Cecilia, your experience and your, um, kind of insight and your attention to, uh, communities and families uh, and networks of communities and families, not just like individuals, you're not an anecdotal person. I know you spend time with broad networks, um, and not just look at data, but look at how experiences reflect realities that then get slightly captured in data. You know, like I think you more than, you know, it's, what, what I think I value so much about your presence on the school board is we need that so much. I am so beyond myself at how far we leave behind special needs families. And so your presence, your voice, uh, your attention to and your engagement with, because I know you'll do more than just be on the school board. I know you will go out to these families. I know you will go out into neighborhoods. I know you will go out and listen beyond what the school district just tells you. And that's why, you know, I think that kind of approach and experience and, you know, you have lived this as well as the consequences of this means a lot. And your experience, I hope, will be invaluable to the rest of your board colleagues. Uh, Council President, I'll just wait until the next round. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council, uh, Member Jim. The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, good afternoon, everybody. I am, um, not going to be, uh, too long with it. I want to first say thank you, uh, to all three, uh, members who, for, um, stepping up to the plate and agreeing to volunteer and take on this tough endeavor. Um, it's not a easy position. It's going to be a lot of hours, a lot of scrutiny. And, um, I appreciate you taking the time, not just, uh, here today to have this conversation, but, um, other conversations prior to this. I know I've reached out to you, um, individually to have, um, some dialogue around some things that I know are a priority to me. And we can't, you know, dare do a deep dive into all the issues as it relates to education because our schools are that, that complex and, and there are so many issues. Um, but for the record, I am on the Education Committee along with a few of my colleagues who were on a call, which is, uh, led by, uh, Councilmember Sanchez, who's, uh, done a great job, um, the, leading our team and, uh, fighting for our children and making sure that we're putting our best foot forward. Um, I do look forward to working with you and hearing from you about, um, some of the issues that we have around our finances. Um, of course, our curriculum is significantly outdated. How can we become much more in- innovative? Um, I have a number of ideas around what we can do, um, to address issues, to support our neighborhood schools. Uh, we definitely need to have an in-depth conversation around, um, what happens with black charters, as, as you've heard from me before, specifically, uh, charters that are ran and operated by black people in the city of Philadelphia are closed at a higher rate, um, than anybody else. And we know, uh, some of the other issues that we talked about that disproportionately impacts black people, that is more than just a coincidence. And so, um, all these issues impact all of our children, families and people of color in the city of Philadelphia, but it impacts everybody. And I think you guys have an important job. And so, um, I, I, I want to say thank you for, for, uh, doing this. Uh, this means a lot to me. Um, I still coach high school basketball to this day. I lost a tough game in overtime last night. So that still is, uh, on my, my heart and on my mind. Um, but I am the Chair of the Coaches Association for the Public League. Um, the Public League means a lot to me. Um, our schools, uh, across the city mean a lot to me. And I look forward, um, to your confirmation and to working with each of you over the next couple of months, uh, to tackle and to address, uh, these important issues. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, uh, put my comments on the record.
Thank you, uh, uh, Councilmember, um, Thomas. Thank you, uh, so very much for your questions. And listen, sorry about that, uh, Councilmembers, you know, you'll get to come back again. So, you know, you can't win them all, like just tell the team to get ready. You'll be prepared for the next game. Um, with that being said, let me say to, uh, to you, Cecilia, um, to Reginald, to, to Lisa, um, and, and, and to the nominations panel, to, that of all of the people who were, who were nominated and who applied and who you had to compete with, they had to foresight to see that each of you in your own respective rights bring value. None more and one more important to the other, but all equally, all equally important. Um, and, and why do I say that? I say that because I have seen so many people, particularly when it comes to the African-American community. Let me just put it on the record, my time, so I get to use it any way I see fit, okay? They will attempt to use race, sex, class, and socioeconomic status to tell you who is supposed to matter when it comes to your position and how you will function in whatever role it is that you are nominated to, elected to, or appointed to. It is like, it's a little black box. And if you don't operate and function in that little black box in a way that they think, um, you know, is appropriate, there is something, uh, wrong with whatever perspective it is that you've taken. I want you all to know, I've been a good listener, um, uh, from Cecilia to Reginald and Lisa. I've listened to your responses to all of the questions that have been proffered before you. Each of you in your own right, from your own space, brings so much to the table. With that in mind, I'm, I want you guys to answer a question that comes from a place of bias in me. I'm a seventies baby who was raised by my grandparents and I'm a product of very, very humble beginnings, okay? When people ask you, where did I go to school? Very specifically, I say this. I am a product of the Dr. Constance E. Clayton Public School System here in the city of Philadelphia. There was something about the teachers in Rowan School that I went to at 19th and Haynes Street. They were, they represented the United Nations. They were not just black teachers. They were black teachers. They were white teachers. They were a part of every ethnicity you could think of. But I would argue there was a something, a certain something that, that we felt as students during my generation. And I'm about to hit the 5-0 stage, uh, in about a, a, a year or two. Tell me what are we doing wrong or what we should be doing differently to recruit teachers in the school district of Philadelphia? Who, one, um, we could encourage, and I don't care if we're talking about Chaney or Lincoln or any of the other institutions of higher learning in the nation. We could encourage them to choose Philadelphia, those who are education majors, right? And we know that the, those who are enrolling in institutions of higher learning in the undergraduate, uh, area, there are fewer and fewer and fewer students who are choosing English as a major or education, uh, as a major. I was an English, eh, maj- uh, uh, major. I'm a certified secondary English teacher by profession. But for those who are, how do we get them to choose the school district of, of Philadelphia? And what do we need to do in order, uh, to compete, to recruit teachers? And, and I want to hear from, from each of you about that. I will, uh, start with you, Reginald, because you represent a constituency that I've been raising cane about in the school district of Philadelphia. And if Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson were here, he would be doing the same thing. The presence of black men. Oh, I thank you, Councilman. The presence of black men in the school district in front of these, uh, classes, because you can't be what you don't see. So, so tell us, if you will, what we should be doing to, uh, add value.
First, uh, Councilmember Parker, I really appreciate the question. I really appreciate your energy. Um, so with that being said, uh, I, 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 obviously, as, as at this point, I don't know exactly what I can do or what the board can do, but I can definitely tell you what I think as an individual, um, what, what we can do. So, um, as many of you, uh, who are black educators or maybe allies have read, uh, there's a brother named Dr. Jawanza Kujufu, who talks about, um, how, uh, black boys, uh, for example, as you asked me as a black man, so I'm going to put my, actually, I'm, I'm always a black man. I don't have to put that hat on. Um, how Jawanza Kujufu discussed, uh, the idea that, um, black boys at early ages are just as excited and, 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 and very happy and want to learn and have analogous grades to their female, black and non-white counterparts and white counterparts. But something tends to happen. And I think what happens is you have people who are teaching our black boys who either don't look like them in either, in any immutable characteristics as it relates to race, gender, um, socioeconomic, don't live in the neighborhoods with, with, with our, with our, with our babies. Um, and I think also you have individuals who may mean well. Um, while they may be book smart, they don't learn our social norms as black folk, right? I, I will tell you as a young man, um, my, my black teachers didn't have to have certain discussions with me. It was just a certain level of respect and a certain level of energy that I, that, that I guess, uh, second sense, because I was raised by a black mother and many black, many fictive kin or many black men who were my father and my father. Um, so I think that that, that has to be something that is intentional. And I think that that kind of thinking has to be intentional. And I think you're right, or there are some individuals who believe that when you start talking about black anything, the reverse racism card comes up or, 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 or other ways of trying to mitigate that discussion when that is actually the elephant in the room. Um, so with that being said, I think number one, be intentional on the inside, like, hey, there is a problem here. Um, number two, I think obviously we, in the meantime, before we fill our schools with, uh, people who look like us as black folk and look like me as a, as black, as a black man. Um, I think that there should be some way to train, uh, teachers that, hey, uh, studies have shown that, uh, you know, people, people from your background or people are white individuals or non-black individuals tend to, tend to view blacks, blacks, black, black students as older than they really are, right? Uh, aging them, aging them up and then trying to punish them as adults when they're children, which as we know can have a psychological impact on them not wanting to go to school in the first place for doing what they're supposed to do as little boys or young men. Um, so with that, so, so, so I think recognizing that and, and, and being intentional about that. Um, I, I, I believe that might be under Dr. Height's kind of, uh, purview to, to do that type of training, but that's something that I'm very much, uh, passionate about. And then, so then after that, it's, it's, so now where do you recruit? And you mentioned, we have Lincoln University and Chaney. I know they always beef about who was the first HBCU ever, you know what I mean? But, but with that being said, I think that you have to actually go out and recruit. Um, so, uh, you know, in, in law firms, um, there, we have some, some of the similar issues. How do you recruit? How do you recruit? It's about intentionality. It's about going out and telling people, we want you here.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, thank, thank you, thank you for, thank you for that response. I, I want to get everybody, all three of you on the record, uh, for that issue. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
If it's okay, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Majority Leader.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I, I just want Mr. Reginald Streeter, just to clarify. I know he said that would be something that would be under purview of Dr. Height, but I want to ask, as a board nominee, would this be a part of your platform as a black man who's sitting on the school board to impress upon the man advocate for the district to move in this direction?
I apologize. I assume, I assume, but I guess you can't assume anything. Yes, sir. Uh, this is something that is top of my, um, it is, yes, that's the answer. I don't want to go too, too much forward.
I had to clarify that because we've been talking about this issue for a long time. And obviously, no one's on the board has actually raised it to the level of importance that it should be. Cause thus far as it is today, we haven't seen the numbers or a strategy around recruitment of black men in the Philadelphia School District. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, for your patience.
Sure. Miss Cecilia Thompson, um, what you're thinking about that? Recruitment?
Sure. Um, when I transferred as a child from Christ Memorial Church to, um, Henry C. Lee, the first person I saw was Mr. Horn, a black man. Um, the principal was Charles E. Thompson, a black man. Um, when I went up to the third floor, um, I can't remember all the African-American men I saw, but I remember Robert Macy. Um, I forgot what he taught, but he was also the track coach, so I ran track. Um, the, the NTAs, or whatever you want to call them, they were former or retired, uh, either military or police people, black men. That's all I saw in that school when I transferred were black men and black women who did not think it robbery to say, we're going to have to, as African-Americans, do twice as much, or this one lady would say thrice as much, um, to get where we have to go. So I wholeheartedly believe that, um, that motivated me because I saw people who looked like me, who cared enough about me to tell me what my, uh, challenges were going to be as I went to college and became an adult. Now, when I went to Girls High, Girls High was Girls High. I was just in the amalgamation of everything. So, so I don't know what the hiring process is, but since we are fortunate, to my knowledge, to have two people who are affiliated with African-American fraternities and sororities to partner with them to say, okay, these are individuals who grew up without everything. You seeing them now, but they grew up without everything and they worked hard despite the temptations of the neighborhood to get where they are today. So that would be, um, a strategy, you know, outside of, you know, the things that we have to do to recruit more. And so this way, you can't say, um, or they aren't applying because as, as somebody who was on the other side of the table, uh, providing testimony, it was always a, they're not, they're not, um, applying. I don't know if they're applying or not. But my, to answer your question, that's, is important to me and that's something that I would charge Dr. Height's team. We need to, we need to do something different. I hope that answered your question.
No, Cecilia, just Johnny, Johnny on the spot. And, and that's the power of your experience, right? Live experience and that's the value that all three of you bring to the table. Uh, Ms. Lisa Sally, who I, I'm, I'm ultimately, I got to state this for the record. I'm extremely biased when it comes to Ms. Sally. I'm listening to you provide this testimony and I'm thinking about all of the residents in, uh, our community, um, the one that many of us grew up in and still live in, um, to the day. I want you all to know that she has always used her intellectual prowess to even help her neighborhood. Father O. at St. A's and all of that, two or 300 people who were at that meeting when we were trying to determine whether or not the community would support the variance to allow, um, um, uh, the nuns, uh, their former residents to turn it into a facility for homeless college students. You know, everybody's always weary of change, but you were the steady hand, Lisa, to provide, um, that, that sort of, uh, honesty and you are honest broker. So we want to say thank you, but I also want to hear, uh, your perspective about recruitment and how do we, um, be intentional about making sure that and how do we, um, be intentional about making sure that there are more black men, uh, and women leading the classrooms like there were during those years that I described when I grew up in the, the public school system.
Yep. And, and I think, um, Ms. Parker, and, and thank you for your, your, your compliments and your kind words. Um, let me start with that, but I, I think the thing is just what you're doing. The first thing we have to do is raise the specific question, right? Raise it and literally set, you know, kind of what I call time and space to sit it down as a specific agenda that has to be answered. I think what we have now, and I grew up in the West Oak Lane also, as you, right? And so something about the magic of West Oak Lane, right? The parents were there, they were involved, whether it was Rowan, whether it was St. A's, whether it was Penny Packer, right? Whether it was the West Oak Lane Boys and Girls Club, or the Ogans Boys and Girls Club. I think we have to raise the question of where are the black teachers and where are the black men in the education process? Just as we raised that question in the seventies and the eighties, which formed Noble for the black policemen coming together and so forth, I think it begins with asking the question. So I think there's a lot of wisdom in you raising it. I also heard just now that it sounds like we've raised it or that, that the council has raised it to either the board in the school district previously without specific plan. So I think we start with literally a who, what and when. And I think as an immediate get started, we also have the opportunity to leverage people from the communities in what I call second careers, which happens all over now, right? Second careers in the sense that maybe people went off and did something in other careers, no different than myself. You see me in West Oak Lane, you see me in Mount Airy, not coming as Lisa, the corporate exec, but rolled up with my hands in the middle of things. Most people don't even know what I do necessarily, because I keep my mouth shut, my head down, and I work in general, right? And not only do I work, but I collaborate with all people. And I think those are important things to start with the answer. I talked about earlier, raising the question of how not know. So if there is going to be more black teachers, we need to say, how are we going to do it? When are we going to do it? And what's the two or three critical things that we have to monitor, pulse and push to make sure it gets there? And then I think what we do is we, we're tenacious about it, right? Not only do we raise the question, but we continue to drive it through the neighborhood. And then we can share across neighborhood what worked and won. There's, uh, when we did some of the preview for coming to you guys this afternoon, um, that one of the council members shared statistics that said 11, you know, zip codes in Philadelphia constitute 90% of people that are on the jails in state room. Right? That data even by itself, neighborhood by neighborhood, helps us to now specify action plans, neighborhood by neighborhood. But in order to have an action plan, you have to start with the problem statement. You have to have a hypothesis of the question to be raised. So those are just some raw thoughts, and I look forward to jumping in with the other eight on the school board, the holding the school board accountable, I mean, the ourselves accountable, holding the district accountable, and then working collaboratively in neighborhoods and with the council to get the specific action plan moving. Who, what and when is what we have to drive.
Thank you all so very much. And Mr. President, thank you so very much for the latitude you just provided me.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all so much for your perspective. Look forward to working with you. Um, Councilman Thomas?
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Johnson, Mr. President, and then Councilwoman Gimm on the second round.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did, so, okay. All right, I got, I have old data. Uh, so it's Councilwoman Gimm? Councilwoman Gimm? Okay, so Councilman, did you say Johnson?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I just wanted to take a moment to, um, acknowledge, um, the three nominees and really, um, express, uh, my support for them. I had an opportunity to, uh, sit in a meeting with Brother Reginald Streeter, uh, with the Philadelphia Community of Leaders Organization, which consists of black, African-American leaders here in the city of Philadelphia, to have an interest on the quality of life of our people in the city. And I also had a chance to meet, um, Cecilia with that group as well. I had a chance to meet with Lisa through hearings that were held by our chairperson, um, Maria Kiona Sanchez. And just want to say that they, I believe all three of them bring a unique set of skills, um, and activism and spirit, um, to this position. Um, and, and I, I want to just acknowledge what Majority Leader Parker talked about. I do come from the Dr. Constance Clayton era of schooling here in the city of Philadelphia. And I remember there was a time where when I would get in trouble in school, it would be a teacher, um, outside my doorstep, um, prior to me getting home. And so it was like a spirit of love and compassion, um, but most importantly accountability that we face as relates to, um, how we were taught, um, under Dr. Constance Clayton. But this is a new day. Um, I support Dr. Height, um, but nevertheless, I also advocate and support for, um, those students and those parents to make sure that our young people receive equality, um, educa- education regardless if they go to a traditional public school or a traditional, um, charter school, because at the end of the day, they are basically black and brown children that are attending school to get educated here in the city of Philadelphia. And I know for a fact it was not, uh, for some teachers that invested in me early on, I would not be, um, a graduate of University of Pennsylvania, I would not be a graduate of Mansfield University, and I would not have taken courses at Harvard Business School. And so I just want to impress upon you, from all three of you, um, that I already know that you know that it's critically important that, um, when you see that things aren't going right, um, as it relates to, uh, the Philadelphia School District and our children, all I ask for, anything else when you take this position, just step up and say something. That's all. Don't be comfortable ruffling feathers, um, because at the end of the day, we're fighting for our children. They don't have lobbyists at the end of the day. We're their lobbyists. We're the lobbyists for their parents, right? And it's critically important that we hold, um, the district accountable to make sure that there's a culture of achievement, um, in every school, um, here in the city of Philadelphia. And I, I often think about how, particularly as black people, we come from a history where we didn't have laptops, we didn't have cell phones, right? But yet we produce the best and brightest leaders in America. And so there's no way in the world that we have these things now. And I think the achievement rate is somewhere around 33% based upon the last report during our last educational hearing. And so Lisa, I just thank you for pragmatic business approach. You talked about hypothesis the other day. I mean, excuse me, in your last, um, uh, uh, statement regarding, you know, recruiting, um, black teachers. I love Cecilia's spirit that she's fighting on the front line, similar to Kendra Brooks, and how she's taking a no hard, no, no holds barred attitude toward making sure our children are educated, uh, and Reginald Streeter. Bruh, I, I, I don't mean to put the whole black male race on your shoulders, but nevertheless, I know you're part of A5A, um, you born for this, bruh. And so, um, I had a great time talking to you and you come highly recommended. So, um, I just want to, um, Council President, I have to step off the call for another meeting, but just wanted, for the record, say, enthusiastically endorse and support all three nominees, Council President, and I'll leave whenever you tell me that, King Council President.
Yeah, because, uh...
You call, you submit.
Yeah, we have a quorum to vote, so.
I will stick around, Council President.
Just for a sec, and, you know, we can kind of...
Thank you very much for my time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think we have Councilman Thomas and then Councilman Green, and you do have to take inventory to make sure we have a quorum so we can...
Uh, Council President, I think it's Councilmember Brooks, and I spoke already.
Brooke, okay, keep changing. Councilwoman Brooks, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Green and Gilmore Richardson didn't get a first round, so I can wait until after they speak.
Yeah, and keep changing this inventory.
All right, so who's, who's... Not just you, Council President, it's all of us.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little convoluted over here. So who's next?
Uh, well, thank you. I think I would be next, thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, Council President, thank you. Uh, two or three nominees for the school board. Uh, thank you for your willingness to step up and to be a public servant. Uh, I had a chance to meet, um, Brother Streeter and, um, Councilmember Johnson. You did make reference to his, uh, fraternal organization, which is a, a nice collective of men, um, that are doing great work in our city. Uh, I've learned about your background. We had a chance to meet, um, virtually, and when you mentioned, um, Jawanza Kujufu in our presentation, that really excited me, that demonstrates your focus on, um, black children, specifically African-American boys. Uh, Ms. Sally, and I've known you for some time as well. You're also a product of that outstanding, um, high school that I have to mention. If I don't, I would be chastised by my mother and my wife, the Philadelphia High School of, for girls. Um, but thank you for your leadership and the fact you have a business acumen that you're trying to bring to, uh, the school district. You and, um, Brother Streeter being an attorney, he being attorney, you having a business background, it's important to bring that and show to our young people what they can achieve, um, by coming through the school district of Philadelphia. And I close by saying, I want to thank Ms. Thompson, uh, for her stepping up as well. She's always stepped up for children that have a physical and learning difference like her son and my son. She has been a leader, someone that many of us who are parents on the autism spectrum look to and has been following her work. And she speaks for a lot of the things that we try to speak for. So I want to thank you for bringing that type of advocacy that has been needed at the school board for a parent that has a child with a physical learning difference to be represented at the Board of Education. So thank you, Council President.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Okay, now I believe it's, uh, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson and then Councilwoman Brooks is what I have.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to my freshman colleague, Councilmember Brooks, for the leeway. Uh, I wanted to, uh, echo the sentiments of our colleagues and just, uh, thanking all of the nominees, uh, to the school board, uh, for your service and for your willingness to serve. And I think we all recognize that we're at a critical juncture, uh, as it relates to education in our city and for me particularly as a, a school district graduate and as a former teacher, and now I have, uh, two, uh, children in the school district. I know how vitally important it is that we continue to, uh, invest in our school district and do all we can, uh, on behalf of the young people we serve. I specifically wanted to, uh, give kudos to, uh, Ms. Sally and to Cecilia, uh, who I've worked with over the years for quite some time, uh, in the Winfield community. Uh, both, uh, are Girls High graduates, uh, representing the Philadelphia High School for Girls. So I just wanted to put that on the record as a Girls High graduate. Uh, we thank you so much, uh, for the opportunity, uh, to work with you. And then also for Mr. Streeter, uh, my Leadership Philadelphia classmate, uh, and Divine Nine Brother of A5A, I thank you for your willingness to serve and really prioritize, uh, African-American young people. Now, I did want to put a few things on the record for you relative to some issues that I care about most with the district, and that relates to career and technical education and how we are looking at, uh, our labor market indicators in the city to ensure that we have programs, uh, that will help our young people, uh, stay on a pathway and get into a pipeline, uh, for job opportunities of the future. And also conflict resolution, working with the board, uh, and the school district, uh, to figure out how we can, with the city, uh, create a conflict resolution curriculum so that all of our young people, uh, have the opportunity to gain the skills, uh, to know how to resolve conflicts. Uh, that's something that I learned, uh, when I was a teacher at Overbrook High School, and that's something I think we need to, uh, implement, uh, throughout the city, uh, citywide. So I wanted to put those, uh, two things on the record, that I want to work with you, um, in, in those two areas, and I look forward, uh, to your service on the school board. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
You want me?
Councilwoman Brooks, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Council President. So I, I, um, I have a bunch of questions, but I'm going to narrow it down to one, because one of my favorite constituents and one of the persons that we all care about, which are young people, and my 16-year-old daughter, this is something that she's very passionate about, so I definitely have to put this on record, because I will be in trouble, or we will both be in trouble, um, for the rest of the day. Um, so for the past two years, there's been a lot of discussion around policing in schools. Um, and the district has spent upwards towards $30 million on school police. Um, now we call them school safety officers. Um, they wear uniforms and carry handcuffs. What are your thoughts on this? Whoever wants to go first?
I, I'll be happy to go first with this one. Um, so I, I, I abhor, uh, the school-to-prison pipeline and any, anything that makes schools, um, look analogous or feel analogous to a prison. Um, when I was with the Innocence Project, I got an opportunity to go to Greaterford and, um, you know, meet a client, and I was actually kind of surprised how analogous the spaces were, the feel, the smells, the concrete. Um, so, I mean, I know we can't physically change our buildings, but also the fact that there are people, you know, watching and making sure everybody's, you know, there's like, there's, the authority is there in a police kind of way. So, um, I think that it is not conducive to learning to, to, to have individuals in, in the schools, um, who are, you know, actively carrying handcuffs and guns and things of that nature. I know those, you know, those who, who believe they should be there would say, well, you know, it's, it's a pragmatic thing to do because of, of, of living in dangerous neighborhoods. But I think there's a better way, and there has to be a better way. Um, I think that it has no place in schools. Um, obviously, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what my, what the role of the board is. I need to be briefed on this, so I can, so I can even be, so I can even be more educated as to what should be done. But you asked what my view is. I, I am, I, I'm antithetical to the idea of having a police state within schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Streeter. Yeah, I, I, I concur, right? The kids, kids behave a lot around what's expected of them and the environment that's set before them and the image is set before them. And so having a police state as essentially their environment that becomes their psychology, that becomes their behavior, I think is fundamentally wrong, right? Any kind of way you describe it. So I share what, 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 uh, Mr. Streeter said relative to I'm vehemently opposed to it, is, is my statement, just my personal view. What we then have to do is take those, that, that statement and that personal philosophy, this is more than a philosophy, and I'll, I'll share another part of my philosophy that I believe, one of the most, probably the only unfair thing in life is the parents or the, that you're born to, or even the environment. And so something like a school, that school environment can become your apprenticeship, if you will, in life, and it becomes your expectation and it fuels your dreams in general. So when I talk about being vehemently opposed is that when a kid's environment can be influenced, essentially set, set the trajectory for their dreams and even their ability to dream and think of themselves in very positive ways, we have to reinforce that. We have to be intentional about the reinforcement in a school environment, what it looks like, smells like, feels like, whether it's the teacher in the classroom, or it not being a jail state are all really, really important pieces. Now, like Mr. Streeter said, we haven't been briefed yet on the board, but I look forward to and welcome the challenge to figure out how to work within the governance and hold ourselves accountable and hold the district accountable in changing that.
Thank you for that, Ms. Sally. Thompson?
Yeah, so, right, okay, my, my camera's working. Um, my personal opinion is, um, nobody should be handcuffed. I don't think the school resource person should be handcuffing anybody. I think they should be providing resources. I think they should be consulting with the school psychologist, the school counselor. Um, the schools now have behavioral health people. I think those things should, should be in place, um, before any, uh, handcuffing, um, occurs. And I hate to sound like, uh, you know, I need to be briefed, but I don't know what the laws are around if they are allowed to even handcuff, or that type of thing is only for, um, the, the Phila-, the, the Philadelphia police. But, um, you know, once I get that information, I'm looking forward, um, hopefully as a board member, to put a policy in place where that's not done by our school, um, resource, um, employees. But if that's done, done under circum circumstances and only done, um, by the Philadelphia police. But again, I would have to be briefed as to what the particulars are on who needs to or handle, um, handcuffs. So I hope I'm able to answer that.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Thompson, and I just want to say again, thank you guys so much for stepping up to this challenge. Ms. Sally, you're the only person I haven't had an opportunity to meet one-on-one with, so I look forward to meeting with you very soon. Um, and I have other questions, just because I'm a longtime education activist, a new councilwoman, um, my passion, and it's also a passion of my young folks that are still, uh, attending Philadelphia Public Schools. So once again, thank you so much, um, and I look forward to meeting with all of you guys.
Thank you, we look forward to it. Thank you, we look forward to it.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. All right, now, according to what I have, that concludes our questions for these witnesses. Anybody wants to correct me? I stand corrected, there being none. Thank you all very much, uh and thank you all. Uh, thank you for your interest, uh look forward to working with you all. Um, going to be a little challenge for you. I mean, trust me, public comment will be very interesting, uh I must say, uh but it's it's good. We really appreciate the fact that you're you're getting engaged and it's very, very significant and probably the most important thing that we can do is help educate our young people. So thank you so much. Okay, so uh there being no further questions from the members, and you all can uh disengage, please.
Thank you.
There being no further questions from members of the committee and, oh, I think we may have one other.
Yes, Mr. President, we have
Hey, is Ms. Haber?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, let me recognize, is Ms. Haber connected?
Hello?
Council President?
Yeah, Ms. Haber? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Am I connected, Council President?
Yeah, you're the next witness, I'm sorry. My, my problem. And you're connected, we can hear you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
State your name for the record. Well, you know the drill and and proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, Council President and members of City Council. My name is Lisa Haber, I'm co-founder and coordinator for the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools, a grassroots organization that attends all board meetings and reports on board activities and uh to which we send all to council members. Council should join in the effort to stop the disenfranchisement of Philadelphians in the choice of board education members and advocate for an elected school board. Until then, we must make sure that Philadelphians are not shut out of the nominating process as they have been since the reinstatement of the board in twenty eighteen. The issue that applies to this process is accountability. And the most important question for the nominees is whether they are willing to be independent of the board leadership and the administration. The board has taken several steps recently to cut back on public speaking, including cutting time from three minutes to two and limiting the number of speakers. The new board members should commit to reversing those steps. Ms. Thompson has been a regular speaker at SRC in board meetings for years. Her constructive comments have led to better quality of education for students, especially those with special needs. Public school advocates like Ms. Thompson should not be muzzled. I did not hear any questions on these specific topics, and I don't know whether they will since the hearing's just about over. Um, I think that board nominees should answer the questions about how they will hold um charter schools accountable, whether they are willing to reexamine the Renaissance Charter School Program, which as former board member Chris McGinley characterized it, the most expensive failure in the history of the district. Um, should the board not have charter renewal hearings when a charter applies for renewally five years? Um, what will board members do to make sure that students have smaller class sizes? And what will board members do to bring back school libraries? Uh, currently, the district has fewer than ten certified school librarians cross the city line in any direction, and you will not find a school district where children do not have school libraries. So I ask you, if possible, to ask the nominees those questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Haber. Mr. Christmas, do we have any other witnesses?
Uh, no further witnesses, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, much, thank you. Uh, so there being no further questions from members of the committee and no other witnesses to testify, I will ask if there is anyone else present in this hearing whose name we have failed to call who wishes to offer testimony on Resolution Number two zero zero seven one five, two zero zero seven one six, two one oh, oh three one, two one oh, oh three two, and two one oh, oh three three. Um, hearing none. I want to thank the witnesses for their participation today, and we value their opinions. I know, I now invite the witnesses, please disconnect, which I understand they have done. Um, now, all the proceedings, witnesses leave the hearing. This concludes the public hearing on the council committee as a whole on Resolutions Number two zero zero seven one five, two zero zero seven one six, two one oh, oh three one, two one oh, oh three two, and two one one oh, oh three three. We now convene the public meeting to consider the actions to be taken on Resolutions Number two zero zero seven one five, two zero zero seven one six, two one oh, oh three one, two one oh, oh three two, and two one oh, oh three three. Mr. Christmas, please call a roll to take attendance. Members that are present, please indicate. So when your name is called, Mr. Christmas, please call a roll.
Council Lady Bass?
Good afternoon, I am present.
Council Lady Brooks?
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Councilman Don? Council Lady Godia?
Good afternoon, President.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson?
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Councilman Green?
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Council Lady Gil?
Good afternoon, present.
Councilman Heenan? Councilman Johnson?
Afternoon, good afternoon, present.
Councilman Jones? Councilman O'Neill? Councilman O?
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Council Lady Parker?
Present, Mr. Christmas.
Council Lady Kionna Sanchez?
Good afternoon, present.
Councilman Squilla?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, colleagues, present.
Councilman Thomas?
Good afternoon, present.
Council President Clark?
President, thank you, Mr. Christmas. Uh, we have established a quorum of the committee. We now begin our public meeting. Uh, the chair recognizes Councilmember Parker for motion on Resolutions Number two zero zero seven one five and two zero zero seven one six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that Resolution Numbers two zero zero seven one five and two zero zero seven one six be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Can I get a second?
I can.
Thank you. The mood and properly second, that Resolution Number two zero zero seven one five and two zero zero seven one six be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor, the most will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye, headed. And motion carries, Resolution Number two zero zero seven one five and two zero zero seven one six will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation. Chair recognizes Councilmember Kionna Sanchez for motion on Resolution Number two one zero oh thirty one, two one zero oh thirty two, and two one zero oh thirty three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolutions Number twenty one zero zero three one, twenty one zero three two, twenty one zero zero three three be moved out of this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. The mood and properly second, that Resolution Number two one zero zero three one, two one zero zero three two, and two one zero zero three three be reported in the committee with favorable recommendation. All those in favor, the most will signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And motion carries, Resolution Number two one zero zero three one, two one zero zero three two, and two one zero zero three three will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation. That concludes the business before the council committee as a whole today. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. President.